Good evening and welcome to the West Covina City Council, June the 4th. The meeting is being called at 7:05. First of all, we have our invocation led by Reverend Leslie Janelle from the Citro Valley Hospice. Will all please rise and after that I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We are now emanate health as of May 1st.
Emanate health, that's right.
Emanate health, yes. As has been said, leadership requires two virtues that seem very simple until they become very inconvenient: honesty and courage. All of you have earned the right to be here today by winning the trust of the people of West Covina, but along with that honor comes a duty of humility, integrity, and public service. So let's settle our hearts for a moment in prayer. God of justice and mercy, we thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service and remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, we ask that you renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your children, confident in your goodness and love. We ask these things in the name of your eternal truth. Amen.
Amen. Please join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Castellanos.
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado, present, council member Schumaker.
Mayor Protem Wu.
Yep.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. Mr. City Attorney, is anything reported on closed session?
There's no reportable action taken. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, anything changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Okay. At this time, I should open up oral communications. Oral communications, like I say, it's going to be five minutes tonight on the subject that you want to talk about, but please, it's five minutes. It's not 5:05 and it's not 5:10, so please have your comments in five minutes. If you like to talk about the budget, please hold off. Don't talk on oral communication because I will be opening it up after the budget is read, so any questions you may have, because the questions you might have, they may answer when they go through the budget. So if you have anything you want to speak about the budget, please hold off on that until after the budget is read and then I'll open it up for oral communications then. Please call the first speaker.
I'll be calling three speakers at a time. If you could please line up in the middle to help facilitate. Fred Schwartz, followed by Brian Jobst, followed by Elsie Messman.
Mayors, council members, members of the audience, thank you for having me here. Professor Fred Schwartz, faculty of Environmental Studies, York University, also Executive Director of the International Renewable Energy Academy, where we teach community people to scope out renewable energy installations. Also working with UC Riverside, just finished delivering with them the Solar Energy Conference at the end of February and the Energy Storage Conference about three weeks later. Also starting a leadership consortium to elevate all things solar based at UCR for inland Southern California. As you may now know, I'm a strong solar advocate, and this is Fred's tent. It's distributed, which means it can be placed close to the load. You don't lose a lot in transmission. There are a variety of different reasons why this is a very good thing. It's reliable. Panels tend to last for 25 years or longer. As a matter of fact, I'm aware of panels that have been 35 and 40 years old still perking away. It's also reliable because there are no moving parts. It's inexpensive. Right now, we can meet grid power cost and maybe sometimes best grid power cost. Oh, and did I say the fuel is free? Combined with energy storage, it can replace grid power. Helps grid resilience. Can support facilities when the grid goes down. It's versatile. It's scalable. It supports the development of a green economy. Helps clean the air. I live in Riverside. That's really important. Generates lots of clean, well-paid jobs. Yields predictable circumstances for business and predictable cash flows. This is also a very important point. So with respect to solar installations, solar goes very well as part of a beautification program. It integrates extremely well in the environment and creates a positive uplifting atmosphere. It integrates extremely well with open space and trails. It supports greenhouse development. Collecting water on site can yield 105,000 gallons average annually of water that can be used to clean the panels and perhaps in greenhouses. It helps create microgrids that can operate when the grid goes down, and so I'd like you to think of this as grid resilience and community security. Thank you very much. I yield the rest of my time. I'm Brian Jobst. My wife and I are 30-year residents of West Covina. The election of November 2018. Some of you on the city council are now saying that the November 2018 election was some sort of mandate, a green light for dangerous development at the BKK landfill. Nothing could be further from the truth. The elections were on November 6th, 2018. After those elections, the presentations about BKK actually began. The presentations conducted by residents and for residents informing them about the risks associated with intensive development on or near the BKK landfill. As a result, many of the residents of West Covina, Walnut, Valinda, and La Puente are just now becoming informed about BKK. Many of the residents are now coming to understand BKK contains 3.4 million tons of liquid, toxic, hazardous waste, all in an unlanded landfill, California's largest toxic landfill, and that you intend to build a hotel directly next to that. The November 2018 election did not in any way give a green light for dangerous development at BKK. The timing of Sing Poli's development. I urge the city to get on the same page. At the May 21 city council meeting, the city attorney said it would be a long time before anything happens at BKK. Meanwhile, both the president of Sing Poli and Mayor Protem Tony Wu have stated construction will begin at BKK within one year, by May 1, 2020. Simple question. According to the city of West Covina, not Sing Poli, not any other source, but in a unified voice from the city of West Covina, what is the estimated timeline for Sing Poli at BKK and what are the steps and approximate timing? Please let the residents know the city's view of what those steps are and when they may occur.
After our next speaker, if I could call up Wenwen Zhang, followed by Jasmine Vargas, followed by Ted Hahn.
Good evening, mayor, council staff, and everyone, excuse me, here tonight and at home, and my name is Elsie Messman. First of all, I want to thank one employee for getting the information I wanted and requested on the May 7 meeting. Needless to say, I got the answer Thursday, the same week of my request. Thanks again. Last June, we were given a city fund structure which explains what every account is for. I find it interesting that account 820 was not listed but was listed on the warrants list as a successor housing agency. There are thousands and thousands of dollars listed to this account for paint and graffiti supplies. Now, how is this charged to the districts? I would like an explanation on this since I live in District 4 and we are charged for graffiti abatement. The sign on Nogales and Valley Boulevard that says "Welcome to West Covina" on the overpass looks terrible. It needs to be done right with the right color of gray and green. The city should have the colors. I talked to the engineer that did the project and he said the city has a match. I do think it is time that we got an outside contractor to do the job right by matching paint for a set fee. The amount we pay for an employee plus benefits, paint and supplies, should be looked into. One charge for the whole city and not this Mickey Mouse idea of passing the costs on to districts, wasting staff's time and trying to make the budget look good.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, staff, and members of the community. My name is Wenwen Zhang and I'm the West Covina Library Manager, and I'm happy tonight here to make announcement of upcoming programs at the library. This coming Saturday, June 8, the West Covina Library will host a flute and guitar concert in our large meeting room. The concert is free to the public and will begin at 2 o'clock to 3. So come enjoy this amazing flute and guitar duo which will feature classical music. Our annual summer reading and discovery program will kick off next Monday through the beginning of August, and the theme for this year is "It's Showtime at Your Library." The program is open for all ages: babies, children, teens, and adults. Please come and sign up for the reading program. You may read anytime, anywhere, and we have lots of prizes for participants, so the more you read and the more you will earn prizes and the more fun you will have. And the library has also arranged a variety of discovery and entertaining special events for everyone to come and enjoy in June and July. So children's specials programs are all on Wednesday afternoon at 3 o'clock. We're going to have puppy shows, magic show, mine show, and a nature day, just to name a few. And programs for teenagers will be on Thursday afternoons at 4 o'clock. Adult programs are either on Monday evening or a Saturday afternoon. So but there are just so many programs, too many programs for me to talk about tonight, so please come visit the library or call the library to find out the details. And all the programs and services at the libraries are free to the public. And I also wanted to mention that the Friends of West Covina Library will host a special fundraising book sale this coming Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. All the money the Friends raised at book sale will be used to supplement the library programs and collection and the new furniture. So many of the programs that I just mentioned, the special events, are sponsored by the Friends of the Library. I just wanted to thank the Friends of the Library so very much for your support. Thank you all.
My name is Jasmine Vargas and I am a current student at Mount San Antonio College, majoring in Sign Language, and a mother to a deaf boy. When I was 18, I had my son, but his deafness was not confirmed by an audiologist until he was months old. Upon learning that he was profoundly deaf by an audiologist, the first option given to me was to have my son implanted, which is a cochlear implant. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar. As a concerned young mother, I researched every option for my son and his future. I chose not to go through with the surgery due to my personal beliefs that my son is his own person with the right to decide what to do with his body when he is old enough to do so. My son will be four this July, and my only option for his schooling is in La Puente Unified School District, which is a city away from us. Out of 11 regions, West Covina Unified School District has informed us that this was the only school to offer American Sign Language as a form of communication and teaching. There are about 10 children of various ages in my son's classroom with only one teacher fluent in Sign Language. The rest of the staff are assistants that are not. I do not believe they are qualified to be helping or teaching deaf children. Deaf children deserve an equal opportunity to receive great education in public schools because not every parent can afford to travel great distances to a private deaf school for their children, such as the California School for the Deaf up in Riverside. Covina Valley Unified School District once offered programs that taught students American Sign Language, but unfortunately, these programs no longer exist and have been converted into exclusive oral communication methods, stripping these deaf children from American Sign Language, which is the language of the deaf community. Oral communication is lip-reading and learning to use any residual hearing that these implanted children have to attempt to speak as a hearing person would. That is extremely difficult for even an adult with mild hearing loss to do, so if you can only imagine a deaf child. Regardless of if these children have cochlear implants and can hear some sounds or not, once those implants are off, they remain deaf children. So according to demographer Dr. Jerome Sheen, 90% of deaf children are unable to achieve intelligible speech despite years of intensive therapy. Also, despite advancements in hearing aids and assistive technology, deaf children today continue to struggle with language acquisition, with 90% of those children raised by hearing parents that are experiencing these significant delays. As a resident of West Covina, I am watching the city grow. We now have new luxury apartments. Porto's Bakery just opened. Thankfully, our city is growing and more money is coming in. I believe we should help the children in our community first. There is a need for interpreters and there are educated deaf and hearing people that can help deaf children through Sign Language. We are talking about children, which are the future. We want all children to become successful members of our future society. These children need to be taught American Sign Language first, then English. There are also many benefits in being bilingual and bicultural, and West Covina is a great city. I just want to leave off on that note. I believe bringing the hearing and the deaf community together will make it even a better place. Thank you very much.
Ted Tran. Joe Chen.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson and Councilman. I'm here tonight to support a project proposed by Sing Poli on the project for former BKK landfill. The reason I'm here is that I heard and read a lot of story in the newspapers, including LA Times, about the health concern on the subject, and as a father, and I totally get it and I agree with that. But the fact is that since 2010, the Department of Southern Control has been attending in terms of the groundwater. We know progress. To me, I think by allowing a Sing Poli project go through, we will help to speed up this matter and solve the issue. Also, there's many examples in the state, different cities among us have very successful landfill projects that have been done, including the one in Newport Beach, I believe in the B Canyon landfill. Even the area close to us, the hotel too, Pacific Inn, was built on the landfill project, and look how prosperity it has brought to the local. And they even have the local trail, which some of my friends have been hiking on it. And I really hope that city will help propose this project, so in the future, I would love to bring my family to the project to hang out. I mean, I'd rather my family to bring somewhere they can hang out a space, somewhere to spend their time than in landfill like a time bomb, no news, and nothing being resolved. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Zig Zhang, followed by Christina Uzetta.
Hi, good evening, good evening, mayor, city council member, and all the brothers and sisters here today. My name is Zig Zhang. It is a great pleasure to have this opportunity to speak out my concern regarding the BKK project. I strongly support this project. First of all, because this project is not just benefit to the city of West Covina and the local residents, also will benefit to other cities around, such La Puente, Covina, Bulling Park, so on. This project is going to build a park and sport field. It is a green and natural environment for the whole family activity, especially for weekend. So since this is a natural and green project, the property around the BKK project, for sure, the value will go up because when you open the door in front of your backyard, you see a golf court, you see a landscape, it's really nice, like blue sky, so that's really good. So also, it's walking decent to the park and hiking trail. The local residents will like it. And on the other hand, this project will be the landmark for the city of West Covina in East LA County because there's no such great project around this area. When the people see BPK project, whatever they mention, they're going to limit later on, the people will think about West Covina, pretty nice city. So also, on the other hand, California passed the PACT 64, which is the bill is like passed like medical use and recreational marijuana use in 2016. Many cities are trying to bring the marijuana business in to their city because those cities are in deficit. They need to increase the city revenue, revenues through the cannabis business because it's quick money. Now, city of West Covina are run by those cannabis cities. Bulling Park, they passed 15 projects. Big project Almonte, they passed five projects. One, what I know is 130,000 square feet. And city Montebello, they passed like dispensary and manufacturer too. And city of Commerce, they passed like 17 projects and also the fighting. I know Council Mendezo got picked up for twice because he against the project. They don't want any marijuana coming to the city. So compared to BKK project in here, in West Covina from Sing Poli, with those cannabis business project from other cities, BKK project create a better environment for the city of West Covina. It can increase the revenue for the city. It brings the happiness, wealth, sunshine, smile on the weekend, not drug, not crime. Please vote yes on this project. Thank you.
Good evening, council members, mayor. I'm just here to speak about my support for the BKK development. Oh, sorry. I echo the gentleman before me. I think it's a great opportunity for the city. The amount of jobs it'll bring for the city, not just with the development but with the project in itself, the revenue, and the recreation opportunities for families and locals make West Covina a destination. I understand that Sing Poli is to pay for an environmental impact report, and I think getting that done will answer a lot of the community's fears, so I look forward to getting this project underway. That's all.
My apologies, I can't read the last name. Chris Yoak?
Yohe.
Yohe, okay. We weren't sure.
Hello, how are you? I am also, my name is Christopher Yohe, and I am also, I stood before you before and I was in support of the development of Sing Poli and I still am. I had read in the, I think it was the San Gabriel Times, some people were, it was interesting because I was reading the article and there was a lot of vocal opposition, and I had missed that meeting. But in the article, people were worried about the toxic, you know, building next to a toxic waste dump. But in the same article, it had said that Sing Poli would pay for a third party to come in and do environmental impact. So I was curious as to if that had not been presented at the last meeting, and then this young lady right here just said the same thing I was about to say. And but it seems to me that this project would be wonderful for the city of West Covina. Like I said before, I've lived here for 18 years, and my line of work, I always have to go out far to find any kind of work for someone like me, and it would be wonderful if this development took place. I know it's going to take a lot of years, but I think it'd be great for the city of West Covina, and that's all I have to say about that. And also, I'd like to echo, I didn't know this young lady who had left earlier, who's speaking of the deaf community. I'm not sure exactly what she was advocating for, but I do know that it is important that we support the deaf community because it is a wonderful community and they don't have a lot of vocal support, so I was happy to see someone stand up for them today, too. So thank you.
Next speaker would be Jeff Smith, followed by Christopher Uzetta, followed by Kevin Lo.
Good evening, mayor, council. I am in support of the Sing Poli BKK, also for the opportunity to bring revenue to the city with also what we were speaking about, the deaf community, revenue for schools, field trips to the nature, also the canine and fire department. Mount SAC does have a fire academy that would, right down the road, a couple miles away, Cal Poly, Pomona, nature, so I believe that it would work for the city of West Covina. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Christopher Uzetta. Here to support Sing Poli project. I've been in the construction business for over 25 years, and I can see the amount of jobs it's going to bring to community, just from the beginning to the end of construction and after that, just the amount of people are going to get jobs after that because they have to staff the place. And I think it'd be really good for the community, put a lot of people to work, bring a lot of revenue in, and like this young lady said, make West Covina a destination. Thank you.
Violeta Zhang, followed by Angela Gonzalez, followed by Alicia Ramos. Violetta Zhang, followed by Angela Gonzalez, followed by Alicia Ramos. Angela Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff and residents. My name is Angela Gonzalez. My life since the age of two has been here in West Covina. Now I'm a 21-year-old senior biology major at the University of Auburn. And I'm concerned for myself and my family who live here. I'd like my audience to know that I consulted many research databases and trusted mentors in this field to help ensure that the information I present to you today regarding the BKK land development is accurate. So I'm a young woman who one day hopes to have children, as many of you already do, and so do many of the people living in this area. For this reason, I think it's important, we know that unborn babies and young children are the most susceptible to the harmful effects of toxic chemicals. Disturbing this landfill would expose you and your children whom you love so much, so much to methane, vinyl chloride, mercury, copper, lead, and at least 12 other hazardous materials found in the BKK waste material. Decades of research show that the substances present in the 3.4 million tons of waste dumped at the BKK landfill are incredibly harmful to human health. Adults exposed to these chemicals have experienced severe migraines, fatigue, drowsiness, cancer, and even death. Children exposed to the same chemicals were born with defects such as cerebral palsy, blindness, deafness that we also clearly want to help avoid and better, low birth weights, small heads, and many, many more. Not only are we endangered adverse health effects, but the methane present at the landfill is incredibly flammable and highly combustible. In the last few decades, people even had to be evacuated from the area because methane had moved from the soil at the landfill into their homes. The movement of those toxicants is very, very possible and it's a very, very real concern. Tony Wu, in an article, had even expressed concern over the release of chemicals at the BKK landfill. He asked the supervisor of the department's activities at the landfill if the heavy rains earlier this year would result in these chemicals reaching the community. And supposedly, five feet of dirt cover was going to keep us safe. Now, Tony Wu's question inspired one in me as well. Because if there was so much concern about these chemicals being released due to the rain, why do we think that disrupting this landfill with something so much more intense as a development is not gonna cause those same effects but worse? If these chemicals escape, they can reach us in the air that we breathe, in the water we drink, the water you shower with. The water can even enter your, the chemicals can even enter your body just by evaporating off the water you're washing your hands over. And I'd like to remind everyone here that public officials such as yourselves and representatives are here for, for us. Here in this country, we're so lucky to be in, the government is intended for its officials and representatives to be elected. And this was designed so that we, the people would have a government that listens to and serves its people's needs. So Councilmembers, that falls on you to ensure that our city functions properly and safely for all the people who live here. And that's me and my family, my little sister at home, and all these people here and all the people who live in the area who don't even know that this is happening. And what we need is a safe place for ourselves and for our families. So I plead with you to give us that safety by not disrupting the BKK landfill. Thank you.
Alicia Ramos.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, staff and residents. My name is Alicia Ramos and that's my daughter who just spoke right now, who I'm very proud of having raised here in the city of West Covina and having been a benefit of all of the things that we have to offer our families here. I'm a mother and an elementary school teacher as well. And I'm here to speak to you against the development of the BKK landfill. I've been a resident in West Covina for almost 20 years now. And when my husband and I moved here with our three children, we did so because of the reputation that West Covina held. It was known for its family-friendly environment, high-ranking school system and safe neighborhoods. We left an area which was filled with gangs, violence and lots of drugs to raise our children in a safe environment. We chose to raise them in the city that offered them athletics, extracurricular activities and a place to thrive. We now have four children, three of whom are in college. All products of the city's schools and neighborhoods. I'm appalled at the idea of having their future being polluted and intoxicated due to the lack of consciousness of anyone, but especially elected officials whom we entrust to make decisions in the best interest of our city, in the best interest of its residents, not land developers. I don't approve the construction of a hotel in this BKK landfill, which will expose millions of toxins, of toxic hazardous waste and endanger the health and well-being of our children. There are other ways to bring revenues to our city without disturbing this site, as many have claimed today for all of the development that has happened here in the last 20 years that I've been a witness of. You claim that you want to clean up the area, Mr. Wu, that you intend to have this site be looked at with new eyes. I ask you, how will that be done? How can you clean up this area when things will be built next to and over that area? How will that cleanup happen? How are you planning to fill this luxury hotel with guests and create revenue when we are asking people to come to a city that right now doesn't have a Disneyland in it? We are a residential city. We are hardworking, class. We all are raising our children here for a better future. And I ask you, does this have any logic behind it? The reason this landfill was shut down in the first place was to stop the exposure of these toxic chemicals for the surrounding residents in the area. And regardless of the fact that you are not planning a residential construction, this project will disturb the earth in an even greater magnitude when development occurs because of the amounts of earth removal and replacement. You claim it will bring jobs to this city through the project. But bringing a business endangers the lives of all of the employees that are there because they too will be breathing these fumes and these chemicals in the air and be exposed to the water. So I ask you to please take our lives and value them and consider the jobs that you have chosen to take to represent the people of your community, the safe environment that our children are supposed to grow up in. And please, keep your residents in mind as you make the decisions for the future of our city. Thank you.
Violetta Hong, followed by Kevin Lee, followed by Nancy Ortiz. Bill Elliott, followed by Therese Garcia, followed by William Chu.
Good evening, everybody here. My name is Nancy Ortiz and I live in West Covina. I support the project being proposed at the former BKK and feel by Saint Pauli and the city of West Covina. The opponents of this project are being misinformed, the entire community, being misinform you and the entire community when it comes to the hotel development that is being proposed. I saw the proposed hotel. This is not going to be a massive hotel complex on the site. It is going to be a modest eco-friendly hotel site that will enhance this project. The city of West Covina has performed a study that indicates 137 hotel rooms will be enough through the 2035. This study did not contain added amusement such as amphitheater, zip line and waterfall villas. These amenities drive more the revenue into the West Covina community in a non-interference means. Excuse my, my accent. The leader of the movement states you will be impacted if you leave, you, you will be impacted if you leave 600 feet from the hotel. That is a complete mischaracterization of the project when completed. It will change the dynamic of West Covina and it will benefit the people living here. I understand the concerns about the lady who just spoke, but my concern is too that our kids need some place to enjoy life in the city of West Covina. So they don't have to go all the way to LA, you know, LA or, I mean, I don't think there's gonna be chemicals in our houses because they're constructing, they're constructing a hotel, a small hotel with amenities to our kids. I have three kids, three grown-up kids, and they're looking for amenities in our area. So they don't have to drive all the way to Santa Monica, to all, I mean, far places. So I mean, I don't know, to me was kind of the, I respect everybody's opinion, but please listen to our, our opinion. I mean, I really, really, really am with the project. That's it. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Bill Elliott.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Bill Elliott. I'm a longtime resident of West Covina. I was a Cub Scout. I was a US Marine. I'm a homeowner. I'm a business owner. I'm a rabble-rouser and all-around good guy. And I'm here tonight to tell you how happy I am to exercise my First Amendment and speak up in favor of the Saint Pauli project. You know, in the classic movie by Steven Spielberg, The Color Purple, I don't know if you've ever seen it. There is a scene where Oprah Winfrey's character, his husband or fiancee, is enthralled with her. He's just loving on her. And he says, "Sophia, Sophia, Sophia." Well, tonight I say Saint Pauli, Saint Pauli, Saint Pauli. Saint Pauli is like manna coming down from the heavens for West Covina. This, you know, if you have any doubts about if, you know, Saint Pauli project will be good for West Covina, you should really put it up against the other $500 million proposal to deal with BKK. Oh, that's right, there isn't one. This, you know, if somebody comes to your town and offers to make a $500 million investment in a dump, you gotta listen. You gotta take that, that interest very seriously. The $4 million conservative estimate annual income for the city is very tempting. When we, when we are in a city, whoever occupies the chair Mr. Carmody's in tonight is just working behind the scenes to get that utility tax, that dreaded utility tax. We need it. We want it. We need it. We want it. We don't need it. They always say, oh, we're the only city in Sangarol Valley. The whole area doesn't have a utility tax. Good. We need investment like Saint Pauli. First of all, Saint Pauli is not a Chinese company. It's an American company. And the principal holder of the corporation is not Chinese. He is American citizen. So stop with all the Chinese Disneyland bigotry because I'm sick of that. I have that up to my eyeballs. Another outright lie that's being told is that this hotel is gonna be built on toxic land. That's not true. That land is supervised by the state. The hotel is gonna be built on clean earth. That's a fact. Pacific Palms, right up the road, is built on a dump. And a generation later, nobody cares. We owe it to the future generations of West Covina to have a fiscal structure of this city that's stable. And Saint Pauli would bring that to us. The cost of failure is completely on Saint Pauli. The city doesn't have any financial dog in the fight. The police department will be provided with a state-of-the-art firing range and canine facility. I know they like that. The amphitheater is a very exciting possibility. Community organizations, residents, maybe concerts, maybe drama. Best of all, we can finally put to bed the old utility tax mantra. Another thing too, I want you to listen who's behind this opposition. We've got a couple of washed-up politicians, a couple of loser pot-stirers that want to rally their forces because they're bitter they lost the election. They keep running. They keep trying to remain relevant. Why would you get behind these two guys? And Brian Jobs, who is only concerned about his grand view off his balcony. Not in my backyard. Well, you know what? That West Covina belongs to all of us and you're the one that bought a house next to a dump. Please, hold it down. Their followers are nimby's. They just want what they want. They don't want what's best for the city. The truth is, the state would oversee any construction. It would be done in a safe and professional manner. Everybody knows that. Let's look forward with this fabulous plan to better our city. All jobs, also, all jobs up there is a priority West Covina resident hiring process. That's so great. How can that not possibly impact our youth in a positive way? Internships, all kinds of things available to us. We have to move forward with Saint Pauli, friends. We have to. The future generation of West Covina depends on us.
Therese Garcia, followed by William Chu.
Good evening, Council, City Staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you again today. My name is Therese Garcia. I am, okay, sure. Is that better? Okay, my name is Therese Garcia. I'm a resident of West Covina. I've lived here almost seven years. And I'm here standing before you because I want to express my opposition to the BKK proposed development by Saint Pauli. I have some rhetorical questions for you. Okay, I heard a lot of things that I, I wish I could rebut, but in the interest of time and, and focus and I, you know, I prepared something and I want to present that to you, okay? So I'll save the rebuttal for another day, next, next meeting probably, okay? I have some rhetorical questions. I would hope that you could reflect on these questions in your spare time, please. First thing. Do you truly care about public safety? If it's election time, you need a convenient buzzword to put on your marketing materials, right? Something that most reasonable people won't disagree with, something that summarizes your values. Do you care about public safety then? If our hard-working firefighters and police officers, many of whom funded your election campaign, if they ask for increased benefits, pensions, overtime, resources, do you care about public safety then? If poor, brown, non-English proficient, tax-paying documented immigrant residents with children and elderly parents who did not fund your campaign, who probably didn't even vote in the last local election, if these folks just recently heard that that mountain in their backyard was actually a former toxic dump? And now they're worried that they might get cancer because building a hotel that they probably can never afford to go to themselves is going to stir up all kinds of toxins into their air and their groundwater? Do you care about public safety? And by the way, it's documented that the groundwater is contaminated right now. And the EPA and other agencies are actually up there monitoring it. It's a sleeping giant. So if you truly care about public safety, you will vote no to the landfill hotel because building that hotel on that land, it jeopardizes the public safety of some of your most vulnerable residents. Residents that probably don't even know this is happening, that can't necessarily speak for themselves and are scared to come speak before you. And you know, I think this is actually a great political opportunity for each of you. You have the chance to stand up on the side of righteousness. You have a chance to say no to the landfill hotel and truly look out for the public safety of all of the residents of West Covina. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is William Chu. On behalf of Saint Pauli Group, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to work with the city to buildify the BKK sign. I want to, I want to emphasize the word buildify in a safe. Again, I want to emphasize the word safe and professional manner. Thank you.
Phil Kaufman, followed by John Schumaker.
Good evening. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but after hearing one statement after another mistating basic, important, vitally important facts, I felt like, excuse me, I felt like somebody had to say something to counter this. somebody had to say something to counter this vast amount of misinformation. First of all and foremost, the Pacific Palms Industry Hills Hotel is not built on or near a toxic waste dump. It is next to a municipal waste dump. There is no asbestos. There is no methane streaming out of there. There are no carcinogens. There are no vitally toxic, deadly substances that are going to be there for the next 1,000 or more years that are next to that hotel. The BKK Level 1 Toxic Waste Dump is as toxic as any waste site in this part of the country, in the world. You cannot compare BKK to Pacific Palms. Some speakers have also said about how magnanimous Singpoli is in going to provide an environmental impact report. They're not being magnanimous. They're not doing anything special. An environmental impact report, to comply with California law, is required for any type of a project like this. And a project where, for decades, eight governmental agencies, the Environmental Protection Agency, the California Department of Toxic Substances, additional agencies tasked with protecting the health of our citizens, have overseen that site. That environmental impact report is a necessity, a requirement for any type of development. And that brings about the timing issue that was brought up earlier. As Brian Jopps mentioned, there has been reports in community newspapers where Singpoli representatives have said there'll be a groundbreaking in May of 2020. Well, remember the Sunset Field sale to Queen of the Valley Hotel? That was two and a half years ago. Two and a half years later, the environmental impact report for that development is in the public comment stage. It is months away from being complete. It won't be complete for at least three years from the time that that project began with the sale of the property to the hospital. To say that there's going to be a groundbreaking construction beginning next year, or even the year after, the year after, the year after, is a fantasy. The nature of this project is not something that will benefit the citizens of our community, especially the citizens who reside in the immediate area around the BKK area. The increased traffic congestion is going to be devastating, have a devastating impact on their lives and on property values. To say that it's a small hotel, it's going to have a minor impact, as some of the prior speakers have said, is, again, misinformation. In fact, Singpoli representatives, who have spoken to community newspapers, including the article that has earlier been referenced, said specifically, "This is a new Disneyland for West Covina. We don't want that. We don't need that. There are better uses for this property."
You know, this is the second time that this project is related to racism. But I'm going to back off for a second. Mayor Pro Tem Wu gets hit about, you know, supporting this project. And when I look at the man, and I have not always agreed with Tony, and Tony will tell you, we've gone back and forth with each other. I see a man that came to this country with nothing, worked hard, and became successful. You're the American dream. You did what we hope everybody can do. Doing some research on the owner of Singpoli, it was a young man who came to this country, worked hard, and became phenomenally successful. The American dream. Why are we blasting them for that? For wanting to share their good fortune with the public? The other thing about racism, you know, I'm second-generation Hispanic. I think my grandmother, who was born in Mexico City, would be a little upset that people who support this, and in turn, my daughter, who is the next generation, don't like brown people. Kind of surprising considering, you know, anybody want a picture of my family? All different shades and colors and ethnic backgrounds. We look like the United Nations. Then I look at Dario. He doesn't care about people of color, you know? Hopefully, you know, where'd your family come from? Letty. You know, I didn't realize that you were just a white person who didn't care about people of color, you know? Because I know about your background, too. Especially you not caring about people who are disadvantaged, considering your background. You're another example of what you can be in this country. So be proud of it. You know? The fact that you don't care about the health of people? I haven't known all of you for a long period of time, but none of you have struck me that you are so uncaring that you want some money brought into this country and you want people to die in order to get it. I mean, that's absolutely absurd. You know, once in a while, Jessica and I go back and forth with each other, but considering we both live in the same house, I don't think she wants something that's built that's going to result in our deaths. You know? You have children in the community. You have children in the community and lived here a long time. Again, I don't think you want anything that's going to cause people to die. You know, you want to be part of the council that, "Oh, look at what you caused. You caused all these people to die because of your greed." What are you personally making from it? Nothing. You know, your family is in, you run a medical practice. Your family is in the medical field. You see people who are sick and injured every day. So to say you don't care is outrageous, and that you're prejudiced and you just want to take advantage of people of color? People must be blind when they get up here. Or just flat ignorant, or they'll say anything without caring about the facts. "Oh, you're, who funded you?" I don't know. I looked at your, I looked at Ms. Lopez's campaign statements. I don't remember seeing police and fire on it, you know? I'm not sure about Tony's, if something snuck in, but I don't believe that was the case either. You know, if you look at Jessica's, I guess the police were so smart that when they gave you a donation when you were running for reelection to the school board, they knew you were going to lose, they would win and appoint you. So it was a devious plan by the police to get you on the city council. Just unbelievable. You know, the only thing I ask for with this project is I'm not going to argue with somebody who wants to spend a half billion dollars. I do expect all of you, though, to investigate before what's going on, keep track of during the building and after the building that it's monitored, so something doesn't happen in between, and if it does, it gets stopped. And I think all of you are going to do that. And I think the people behind the project are going to do that because they don't want to lose a half a billion dollars. I don't care how much money you have. You don't want to blow that kind of money. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Lyndon Nguyen, followed by Bill Robinson.
All I have to say is, "Pleasure Paradise Hotel, Back to the Future Part II," if we're going to reference movies. That's it.
Well, Bill Robinson, good evening, resident. Well, I would like to argue with a fellow that wants to spend a half a billion dollars on this because, you know, maybe he ought to look at his business plan again and take a second thought. And perhaps he hasn't discussed this with enough government scientists and scientists in general. But the rhetoric I've heard so far tonight, it just unexpectedly brought me up to the I agree with the guy that says this will create a lot of construction jobs. A guy like that in that industry is bound to support this project. And I've lived in West Covina a while. There used to be a, on San Bernardino Road, Lark Island Towers. And tearing it down after it stood empty for 10 to 20 years, that created a lot of jobs, too. But I'm concerned about the Singpoli Company, and I'm convinced they don't know, I'm an old man, and at least I'm smart enough, I am ignorant, I'll admit that, but I'm smart enough not to mess with a hornet's nest. And perhaps the company doesn't realize what they're getting into, but this isn't going to benefit West Covina. And the reason I'm here tonight is because there's so many pro-Singpoli voices here tonight. I think it's as lively tonight as it's ever going to be. But those residents should have showed up at two well-attended community meetings where I heard large groups from two areas of this community, they came up with multiple really good alternative ideas. I mean, these ideas can be brought back in the environmental impact process, but there was a lot of creative people that showed up and shared their ideas and their synergy, and nobody stood up and say, "You know, we need a hotel here." Those folks weren't there on those nights. Financial details have been discussed tonight, and I'm a little concerned that this might trigger another Big League Dreams-type fiasco. I think we're all a little ahead of ourselves because I'm not aware that any of the financial details and the giveaways and incentives that West Covina might give to the developer to incentivize this project, I don't believe those discussions, maybe they have in back room, have occurred or that deals have been reached yet. But it's pretty obvious to me, and even the proponents of this project that are here tonight, you know, dialogue and conversation is great, and that's what the environmental process is all about. But there's, I think, over 2,000 monitoring wells to try to monitor the situation, keep it calm and stable and undisturbed, and it's been in place for many, many years. I think it's funded by Chase Bank and others. But right now, it's a stable situation. And even for a city like us that's close to bankruptcy, we don't need this kind of revenue. It's too big a risk for the residents and also for Singpoli. But, you know, I congratulate them for wanting to, you know, put up $500 million, but I think they better think again. Thank you.
Ted Tan, followed by last call for Violetta Hong and Kevin Lee. We have no more speakers after that.
Hi, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Ted Tan. Tonight, I want to go on this record of supporting Singpoli and leveraging for new environmentally safe project on the former BKK landfill. We need to remember that not one penny of public funds are being used to build this incredible environmentally safe green project. This project will also be a huge economy boom for the future of West Covina and all of its residents, and it will be a place of pride where families will build memories together for generations to follow. It is time to listen to the local people who live around here to support this project. And one more thing, I respect different opinions. The BKK project definitely doesn't have any toxic or were poisoning anyone, but Nayer does. Thank you.
We have no more speakers?
Okay, thank you. Now, we'll be closing the oral communication. So our next one is our consent calendar. From my understanding, there's no items going to be polled tonight, so do I have a motion to accept a consent calendar as a sentence?
I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion and second. We have a roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who seconded? For the record, I'd like to read in Agenda Item 3, Ordinance Number 2460, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, to amend subsection 1 of section 26-685.93 of Chapter 26, Article 12, Division 14 of the West Covina Municipal Code relating to small recycling centers. Councilwoman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumaker?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, at Passage 5.0. Now, we're going to be moving into our public hearings. I'm going to turn it over for a minute to our city attorney. He wants to say something.
So there are five public hearings set on the agenda, and it's possible that people do not wish to speak on any of these items, and that the City Council can consider them on consent. So to move this along, I would ask the City Council or the public if they have a desire to speak on any of these public hearing items. So the first public hearing is on the TAFRA, the TAF exempt, the tax-exempt bonds for the Cameron Park Apartments. Does anybody wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, number, the second public hearing item would be the 2019-2020 Community Development Block Grant CBDG Action Plan. Does anybody wish to speak on that? No, were there questions? No. Okay. The third item is the West Covina Landscape Maintenance District Number 4 Public Hearing. There is one, so we'll hold the public hearing on that item. The fourth public hearing is the West Covina Landscape Maintenance District Number 6 Public Hearing. Anyone? No. And number 11, the Landscape Maintenance District Number 7 Public Hearing. No. So if it pleases the council, you could consider a motion to open and close the public hearings on Agenda Items Number 7, 8, 10, and 11, and then vote to approve, based on the record being the staff report.
I'll move to declare the hearings open and closed on Agenda Items 7, 8, 10, and 11.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have a roll call, please.
Roll call? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
The City Clerk's Office would like to correct the notice information regarding Item 8 of this agenda. The notice for the CBDG hearing was published on May 3, 2019, and not May 18, as stated in the staff report. The affidavit for publication of notice is included in the report.
So I assume that that didn't change anybody's mind? Nobody wishes to change anything? All right.
No, and I'll change my motion to approve.
Perfect, to incorporate that. Very good. So the motion would be to approve these four items? It's been seconded?
I seconded.
Councilwoman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumaker?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, at Passage 5.0. Now, we shall open up the public hearing on Item Number 9, with the West Covina Landscaping Maintenance District Number 4 Public Hearing. First, we shall have a staff reading, and then we will show, helping it up for a hearing from the residents. Mr. City Manager, who shall give our staff report?
Mayor, councilmembers, residents, and staff. Landscape District Number 4 was established in 1995, pursuant to Landscape Lighting Act in 1972. The district was created at the request of the owners of the development in lieu of the forming of a HOA. This district is located in the southern part of the city known as Woodside Village. Funds are collected to maintain landscaping, irrigation, hardscape, and cell lighting on 130 acres of open public spaces within the boundaries of the district. In fiscal year 2019-2020, engineering report recommends that the assessment rates be maintained at their current level. The projected income from the recommended rates is about $1,037,950. In addition, $9,000 will be received from Landscape District members. In addition, $9,000 will be received from Landscape District Number Two for the cost maintenance in the overlap area between Landscape District Number Two and Number Four. Also, $11,000 is projected from the interest from the, the district. With the, with a $2,228,000 projected fund balance from the previous year, the total funds available is $3,286,000. The preliminary operating budget for this fiscal year is $1,015,579, which is a decrease of 1.13% compared to the approved amended budget from the previous year. The proposed operating budget only funds the regular landscape and, and irrigation. Two capital improvement projects are proposed for this year, one being the tree trimming and the shrub clearing at, at the cost of $400,000, and then repair and oil replacement of paseo lighting at the cost of $100,000. The fund balance at the end of the fiscal year is projected at $1,770,000. The City Council has the following options: approved staff recommendation to maintain the assessments rate at the current level, reduce the assessment rate, reserves will be depleted at a faster pace regarding the city general funds to subsidize the district or provide alternative directions. This is the end of my report. Any questions? I'll be happy to answer.
I don't see anything. Thank you.
Okay, I know we have at least one speaker, but I would like to ask our city, our, our
city clerk, as the notice of this hearings have been published as required by the State of California, would you verify the proper legal notice has been given?
Yes, Mayor, that is verified.
Okay, thank you. I think we have one person. Would you please come forward?
Elsie Messman?
Of course. On Item Nine, the agenda regarding District Four says, says that we are not a separate entity of the city. Well, once again, who pays for all the parks and the playgrounds because this is added into it now for the highest, for the entire city? Who pays for all that? I thought all parks and playgrounds belong to all the citizens of West Covina, no matter where they live. Since we are not a separate entity to the city, why is the district, why is this district paying for bee removal, crime scene cleaning, replacing the walls and the fences, and that's just a few? We want to look after our paseos, that is our problem, but I think the engineering staff is getting carried away. Please look at District Also Six and Seven. They are also being charged with parks and playgrounds. Since this does not affect a rate change, I would like the council to check all the districts and see what is being charged and bring it back at another meeting. The last time, the last thing, when they increased the sewer fee, I said, there was no sewer problem, I don't think, in our area, yet we had to pay for it as a city resident. So let's be fair about this, and I think all the districts should be looked into because the parks and the playground areas, that should be part of the city. It shouldn't be charged to us because we have a, a park in our area, sort of thing, that's 25 acres, and we got to pay for it? I said, it's open to everybody. The paseos is a different story. I said, not that many outsiders walk or, or use it, but I think that it should be taken over to the next meeting because I think it's getting ridiculous now. Thank you.
Is there any comments? Is there anyone else who likes to speak before I? If not, I will close the public hearing on this item, and is there any comments from the council?
Follow to Elsie, maybe you can answer the question regarding the charge for park and recreation. Do we, why does including the charge?
And the sewer fee, too?
There is, all the funds are, cover the costs of maintenance and landscaping only in the open space areas. Funds to, to maintain the parks are usually from the general fund.
Well, we have a resident who is questioning if other things are being budgeted, so I know we do Mother May as at, at the end, but this is part of this discussion. This has been an issue in the city for years. What's going on with the landscape maintenance districts' charges to that? So can we just have a report that tells us what each landscape district is supposed to pay for based on their original documents and what they're being charged for now? It may be, everything's correct, I'm not insinuating anything otherwise, but just to finally put this question to rest because our residents do deserve an answer as to, you know, why is a car crash cleanup in a landscape maintenance district? And is that allowed? Because I remember years ago, that was one of the issues on the landscape maintenance districts. And have we located the paperwork that people have been looking for, the original landscape maintenance district agreements? Perfect. So it should be very easy to compare, give us a report that says, this is what each district is supposed to pay for, and this is what it's paying for, that we can then disseminate to the public.
Yeah, I did provide, Ms. Nessman, the original documents.
That's fine, but it sounds like it's more than one district that there's questions on, and there have been over the years, questions about it. So just a simple report that says, this is what District One's papers say, and this is what it's paying for, or how we're justifying a charge that may not look proper to the residents.
I will echo that because I too, I have requested that, so yes, a report, please, for the council and for the public would be very, very helpful. And I, this is something I've heard the public asking about for years, so I think that's, it's due. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think I have a quick question. My understanding, okay, each district is like a homeowner association, okay, but it's kind of in charge by the city, and we charge additional extra on the property tax per square foot, okay, and then the resident, based on different district, they pay differently. Okay, am I right? So, so in that way, and we charged, okay, this district, and we should, we should be only using those money in that district, okay, not mingling, using their money to order, clean up, disunlead, due to we lack of money, then we use their money. So, so I think the resident want to make sure, okay, we using their money in this district collected by this district of, okay, resident, those money should be only using this district to clean up, okay, those trees, those bushes, okay, and to make the, okay, the district, okay, nice and pretty. Okay, am I right? So, so I think, I think, I think this is what the resident in this district, I talked to the, some of the people, too, the resident in this, all this district, they, they want to make sure that the city charge them, and they should be only using the money in their district, and we need to prove to them, we don't have, and you guys didn't kind of mingle into fund and using their money to some other thing. So can you provide the document to the, to the each district of their resident as a transparent to let them to see, check about how we pay for each of the thing, and we never use their money? If we use, we should return it into their, their fund.
Okay, what we want to do, want to make a motion, pass this, and with those caveats, they'll bring those back to us.
I'll go ahead and move this district, keeping the assessment rates at their current levels, and the report would tell us what we need to do from there.
I'll second that.
Here, we have a motion and a second, and we have a roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, this is passage 5-0. That's the end of our public hearings. Now we shall be moving to the Department of Regular Matters, Finance, Department of Preliminary Fiscal Year 2019 Budget. Our...
How about CBDG?
No, that was under, you already, you... Anyway, our, that report's to be given, but I'd ask for the council, if we would hold off on all of our questions and to have the report is done, this way, he may answer some of the questions that you might have, or he may bring up some questions that you didn't, you might want to ask that you didn't think about. And then we'll open it up for the residents first, so they can speak on it themselves. So, Mr. City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, members of the public. Agenda Item 12 tonight concerns the city's preliminary fiscal year budget for 2019-20. Just by way of introduction, I'd like to note that this budget was a team effort. I know many hands make a light load, but I'd like to take just a moment to publicly thank and praise our Finance Director, Robin Byrd, without whom we would not have been able to produce this budget by last Thursday. And we also had a, a team effort that involved all of the city departments and each of the directors personally rolled up their sleeves to make this happen. Our agenda for this topic tonight is, first, we're going to have a brief introduction and overview. We're going to review the operating budget. We're going to take a look at the CIP. We're going to study the general fund. We're going to talk about financial trends. We're going to talk about implementation steps, and then we're going to take questions. I'd also like to note that we are scheduling a community budget workshop for next Monday at seven o'clock here at City Hall, because I realize there's going to be a lot of questions, and we would welcome those. And we're going to have a, a separate night just to focus on this topic because this budget has, has just been prepared and, and released. Beginning with the introduction and overview, there are six goals identified in the budget, and the budget is really predicated on these as philosophies. First, to try to position the city to achieve fiscal sustainability, financial stability, to enhance city facilities and infrastructure, to enhance the city image and effectiveness, to enhance public safety, to enhance city programs and activities, and to engage in proactive economic development. Just as an internal document, every single agenda report that's prepared, the city system asks the, the writer of the report to identify under which of these goals the report falls, and I think this is some broad goals and that these are sound and we're recommending to you this evening. Most important message, I think, to impart is that this is a balanced budget that comes obviously at a cost. This was not an easy process, but our three bywords were economy, efficiency, and effectiveness. I'd like the public to know that, that the public safety departments are fully staffed in the frontline services and that the overtime budgets are very closely managed. It proposes some reorganizations, reducing some management and management support positions, and reorganizes some city departments. Specifically, this budget recommends the shifting of the code enforcement function from the police department to community economic development, so the city can begin to achieve some better coordination with building and safety and with planning and zoning. In the realm of building and safety, that we make sure everybody gets a proper permit. I think there's some of that going on now. And secondly, regarding the zoning ordinance, that the city planning commissions, conditional use permit conditions, and the sign ordinance, and the other provisions of the municipal code are enforced in close alignment with the mission of the Community Economic Development Department. I'm going to ask our director to walk us through the operating budget next. Robin?
Thank you, City Manager Carmini. First, we're going to focus on a very big picture of the city, looking at all funds, and then we're going to narrow it down a little bit to the department level. So for 1920, our projected revenues by fund type are $113.1 million, with the general fund being 58% of that, and then the special revenue funds come next at 22.9 or 20% of the budget. Our expenditures by fund type are $108.4 million, which again is about 60% of the general fund, and the second largest revenue, our expenditure is the special revenue funds. We're going to look a little bit now down deeper into the departments. Administration, which consists of City Council, City Manager, City Attorney, and Information Technology, is budgeted at $2.8 million, and as you can see from this slide, and you're going to see a common theme throughout this presentation, that our salaries and benefits are the largest piece of that, for the most part. Here, it's a little bit less than half, but for most of the presentation, you'll see the departments are very labor-intensive. The administration personnel, things to be noted on here, we had a vacancy, a vacant position of a deputy city manager, and that position is not being funded this year. We also unfunded an admin assistant one position, and that leaves the administration with 6.5 full-time equivalents. One of the harder things in this budget preparation is that in the last couple of years, there's been a lot of movement between changing departments, and IT was moved into the city manager's budget, so you'll see, when I show you the finance personnel, you'll see a decrease in that a couple of years ago. And again, with public works being changed to public services and community development being changed to community services, it was really difficult to try to get this to be apples-to-apples, so you may notice in previous years, numbers not looking quite right, but I assure you, they are.
Robin, if I could interrupt just for a second. I know we've got several members of the public here, and I appreciate their being here and their interest in the budget. Copies of this PowerPoint are available online, and we've also made, I think, enough sets that everybody that wants one, they're on the entry table as you come in. I know some of these slides are a little hard to read, but if you'd like to follow along here, we've got copies in the back. If you'd like to follow along at home, this is, this is online.
So moving on now to the city clerk budget. City Clerk's budget is just a little over $300,000. Again, salaries and benefits are the largest part of that, with it being 82% of the budget. On the personnel, there are two full-time equivalents in there, and although these personnel slides do not include part-time people, I think it's important to note that two part-time positions were eliminated from the city clerk's office. Our 1920 Finance Department budget is $19.1 million, with the largest part of that being the debt service, which is about 72% of the budgeted amount. And here's where you'll see IT in 1718 was still in the Finance Department. It has since in 1819, and going forward, it is in the city manager's or administration Our Human Resources budget is $4.9 million, and it consists of three funds for our workers' comp, our general liability, and the general fund is 14% of the total. This is one of the rare cases where our salaries and benefits is not the largest portion of that budget. Our materials and services are almost 92% of that budget. Personnel there, we chose not to fund a human resources director. That position is now vacant and will remain vacant for the coming year, and so you have three people total in there. There has been a shift of responsibilities to the assistant city manager, is going to oversee that department for this coming year, and we have also budgeted to take some, to give her some relief because she already wears so many hats, a part-time person to oversee the public works projects. Our police budget is $34.4 million, and 90% of that is general fund monies. The remainder gets funded by our special revenue funds, a lot of grants. And again, on this slide, you're going to see that 90% is of their budget is salaries and benefits, and I, and I want to say, a lot of these operations, police, fire, and some of our other departments are very labor-intensive. are very labor-intensive, and I want to remind everybody that our staff is our most valuable In police, sworn, we have one vacancy in a captain position, and that's going to remain vacant until the chief is appointed. We have an acting chief right now, and when that position gets appointed for the new chief, whoever that may be, we will decide what we're going to do with that position. There are currently, in the police officer category, there are seven vacancies. We hired one new person yesterday, and we have one in the academy that we made an offer to, and there's five in background. And once we get all of those positions filled, we should be able to cut our overtime in those departments considerably. City manager already mentioned on here that the code enforcement supervisor is being moved to community development, and it's going to be backfilled with three part-time staff people under that person. We unfunded an admin assistant in this category, and also, there was a forensic specialist that hasn't been funded now. It was in last year's budget, but it's been vacant, and so that wasn't funded this year either. This final group is the police personnel service group. This is the enterprise fund, and there were no personnel changes in this one. It's not the final one. We have dispatch, sorry. And there are four vacancies right now in our dispatch group. Our fire budget is $20.4 million, and, again, salaries and benefits are 90% of that. Our overtime budget for 1920, this current budget that's being presented to you tonight is $2.1 million. Last year, we budgeted $1.7 million, and we're on target to spend about $3.6 million by year-end. So, they've gone over that budget by about $1.9 million. One of the things that we did this year in the budget is we added a new revenue line in the fire and a new expenditure line for the mutual aid that they do when they go out to other fires in the state, and we get money back from that, which should net us. We're figuring about $207,000 for the expense, and we should take in about $273,000. So, that's about $66,000 in revenue. Our vacancies in the fire personnel right now, we have six. There's five firefighter, paramedics, and one firefighter, and our goal is to have those filled by July 1 of this coming year. Community development is $2.3 million. Again, 71% of that is general fund money. And, again, it's very labor-intensive, about 68% of that number is salaries and benefits. This slide here, the personnel, pretty much remains the same, with the exception of the building and the engineering. We have sent out an RFP. We have gotten responses to that RFP, and we're in the process of interviewing firms to contract out the building and engineering services. The same thing on this slide, with the engineering positions being vacant now. This slide here, I think, is the busiest slide that we have. It's public services at $20.9 million, and only 27% of that is the general fund. And it's one of our rare times where salaries and benefits do not make up the bulk of that. The salaries and benefits are approximately 22% of that budget. In these next two slides, there were no changes for the fiscal year, their in-personnel. Now, the capital improvement program budget. This slide here, we have a five-year capital improvement program. The first column under 1920, we have $8.3 million for this year, and there is no general fund dollars in that amount. This slide here just shows what types of improvements we're doing, and you can see that traffic signals in streets make up about 53% of our capital improvement projects. This lists all of those projects by fund, funding source, and this slide just shows it graphically. Finally, I want to talk about financial trends for a moment. You can see, in 1415, our revenues slightly exceeded our expenditures, and then, and the same thing in 1516, our revenues were still ahead, and in 1617 and 1718, our revenues were now less than our expenditures. In 1819, they were almost even, and then you can see in 1920 that we're back on track, and our revenues slightly exceed our expenditures. So, I think we're going in the right direction. This next slide shows our public safety expenditures, and the revenue there is our property and sales tax, which are our two largest revenue sources. And you can see that green line, they do not, our property tax and sales tax does not cover our public safety expenditures entirely. In this next slide, this is our pension costs and our OPEB liabilities, and you can see from 2011 to 2017. And the reason it's 2017 is these reports that are done by the actuaries lag two years. But our pension costs have increased $72.5 million, and they're on target to continue increasing for the next several years. And looking at the general fund, this chart just shows our sales tax revenues and, from '08-'09, all the way through the projected for 1920. And we went down in those early years. They started to go down, and then we've slowly been climbing back up, had a slight decrease in 1617, and it's been fairly stable since that time. Property tax revenues looked like they bottomed out around 1011, 1112, and they've continually gone up in the past several years. And this shows our general fund revenues by source, and, again, our property tax and our sales tax are our largest two revenues, are about 67%, or 2/3 of our general fund And here, again, you can see our revenues in 1415 were higher than our expenditures. Then, we had three years, three bad years, where expenditures were higher in the last several years. Again, I think we're back on track. But I think it's important to note that we're not out of the woods yet. We have a lot of unfunded liabilities in the city. We're in need of buying vehicles. Our buildings are in need of repair. Our pension costs, like I said, are going up, and, in fact, in July, we need to send Kelpers almost $12 million. This just shows our fund balance that was as of June 3018 in our financial statements, and it shows that we do have the minimum requirement for our unassigned is 18%, or 17%, and we were currently, at June 3018, we were at 18%. This slide here, I think, is very telling. You can definitely see in '13 and '14, our loss of redevelopment, our fund balance went down a lot, and then we started climbing out of that hole. You see the same thing with the unassigned fund balance in those two years. Our fund balance, our unassigned fund balance decreased a lot, and, again, we're increasing it. And there must have been some one-time revenue that came in in '15. I don't know what that was, because it spiked there, and then it's been fairly stable since that. And then, at this point, I'm going to turn it back to the city manager to talk about next steps, and then we can open it up for questions.
Thank you, Robin. I wanted, just for a moment, to talk about implementation steps. From the perspective of a city manager, I've been here now a total of, I don't know, 10 minutes in a month. It's a very short run. Sometimes, being a city manager is a little like being a mouse on a steering wheel. You get to see the world from a unique perspective. But I'd like to offer these as perhaps self-criticism, and these are what I've identified as business practices that I think the city needs to pay particular attention to that have fiscal impact. I just wanted to spend a moment on these before we get to questions. First, I think in the field of public administration, generally, the thing that amazes me almost every day is the extent to which things which are known best practices, things that are known in the literature as best practices, aren't followed. And I've highlighted one here in the area of environmental compliance. I think the city has some exposure there and some need to do better. You look at the new laws of Clean Water Act and NPDES and the Regional Water Quality Control Board, the one best practice the city has is street sweeping. And you don't think about that. It's almost an invisible service, but I think the city needs to take a close look at that going forward. We're doing it well enough, and we're doing it often enough. Secondly, this is kind of a general observation. I think the city needs to do a better job of quantifying and trying to address its unfunded liabilities, and I've listed a few. Pension cost seems to be the elephant in the room. If you look at the trend lines, this year doesn't frighten me as much as it does three, four, and five years out. Those costs continue to rise at a rapid rate, at a rate that'll pretty quickly take over services. The city will be paying more pension costs and be able to provide less services. And so, I think in this realm, the city needs to look at alternatives. We've got a presentation coming to the Audit and Finance Committee tomorrow at their meeting to look at one alternative, which is pension obligation bonds as a way to smooth that out. It's a tool that I've used before in my career, and I need to say right up front, it's a tool that's not universally embraced. The GFOA has some concerns about it, and those are published, and we're going to talk about those things tomorrow night at the meeting of the Audit Committee. In the realm of ADA, I think the city needs pretty quickly to sharpen up an ADA transition plan. It's a liability exposure area, and it needs to take a hard self-examination of every single city facility. We've started to see some increased litigation. There's one lawyer that I think has figured this one out, and has started to sue the city, and it's almost like you automatically win when you sue, if you don't have the proper clearance between a bus bench shelter and the edge of the sidewalk for a wheelchair. But there's far more to it than that. The city needs to go through every single one of its facilities, its council chambers, its city hall, and look at every single aspect of that for ADA compliance. Do we have old-style doorknobs? Or do we have levers? Do we have sidewalks that are compliant? Yes or no? And I think the city needs to take a hard look at those things. I mentioned here facilities and fleet needs. The philosophy that seems to have been employed in recent years, just as budgets got tight, those fundings became scarcer and scarcer. But in maintenance, the philosophy that's been employed is known as run to fail. And you put an asset in service, and you just run it until it fails, and you kind of then act surprised that, you know, the roof leaks, or the police car needs to be replaced, or whatever it is. And I think we need to get ahead of that. I think that's reacting, not managing, and I think we can do much better there with our facilities and with our assets. It was raining a couple of weeks ago, and I was bemoaning the fact to the mayor that we had six buckets in City Hall. The roof was leaking. And he joked back at me. He said, "Only six?" But I think it's telling. We've got, what, 21 roofs, and most of them are leaking, and we can't have, you know, tarps on the roof as our plan. We're going to need to do better to address the city's facility needs. This next one, I think the city needs to review its bidding procedures, its purchasing procedures, and to take a hard look at cost recovery for city services. This next one's a big one. I think the city needs to adopt, right away, alternative dispute resolution methods and employ some known techniques, some things like interest-based bargaining. The city is out of contract with its unions, at least two now, and probably nine by the end of the fiscal year. And we're going to just need to engage in some honest dialogue with the employees about the collective bargaining agreements. The city's got a lot of litigation. The rule of thumb would be, you'd want to be spending one to two of your general fund on your legal, and we're spending far more than that. We need to look carefully at every single one of those cases and engage in honest conversation about whether we could settle them. This next one is a big one. We need to, in all of our business dealings, begin to avoid and transfer risk with everyone we're in contract with. And then the last one, I think, is every city manager's prayer. Once this budget gets adopted, we're going to need to really mean it and have some budget discipline. We're going to need to adhere to the city's adopted budget policies, and as the inevitable requests come in, we're going to need to either say no to them or find other economies or other things in the budget that we don't wish to do. And with that, I'm going to open it up for council and community questions. Thank you very much.
Before the council, is there anyone out there resident would like to have any questions about the budget? If you do, please come forward.
I have three speaker cards. I'd like to call it Jim. Jim Grivich, followed by Brian Jobst, followed by Renee Chavez.
I'm not speaking as from the Audit Committee, because we haven't met yet. We're supposed to meet tomorrow. So, this is just Jim Grivich today. I am pleased about parts about this budget, which is that it appears that the city actually has made some progress on budget policies, which, for a long time, most of you weren't here, but I've been speaking for a long time about terrible budget practices, mainly spending more than was received and more than was budgeted. And there's been definite progress on that subject. However, there's still one glaring exception that's still in existence today, and that is the fire department. This last year, the fire department spent, is projected to spend, according to the budget document, approximately $1.4 million more than was budgeted for overtime. It's almost double the amount of money that was budgeted for overtime. I think that's totally unacceptable. It's absolutely against the budget policy that the council adopted last August. Fortunately, the police department, on the other hand, which had traditionally spent more than was budgeted, has actually come into compliance with the budget policy. So, we only have one last department to deal with on this, in this subject. And I appreciate the comments that there's going to be an effort to deal with this. I hope it's true. In the past, I've made speeches that I can't trust the budget document, because the city tended to ignore it in the past. The city manager has said that he is not going to ignore the budget. I hope that's true. I sincerely hope it is, because I've also said several times, because if that doesn't happen, the city is facing bankruptcy. But the good news is, if it does happen, if the city has fiscal discipline and actually stays within its plan, I think bankruptcy can be avoided. True, there will need to be more cutbacks in future years, because, as was said, pensions are eating the city's life, and they will continue to do so. But I do want to make one public comment on that subject of pensions, because it's hardly ever said in public, and I think it needs to be said. There is actually a simple solution to the pension problem, simple mathematically and arithmetically, not necessarily simple for all the people involved. But if the employees paid a larger portion of the pension contributions, the problem goes away. It's kind of that simple. Years ago, the employees negotiated a better pension. Instead of retiring at 62, they changed it to 55. Or in the public sector, the bugs are bothering you. Or, in the case of public safety, they changed retirement age from 55 to 50. That created the enormous cost. That created the enormous cost that we're now facing. Well, theoretically, maybe if the employees think that is the most important thing in their lives, their pension, perhaps they should help pay for it. That boils down to an answer to the problem, and I actually think it's the best answer. I do not think reducing positions and layoffs, which is what the city's talking about right now, is the best answer. I don't think that's a good answer, actually. So anyway, that's my opinion about the budget process. There's one overall thing that I'm a little concerned about that wasn't part of the presentation. If you look at the very end of the big book, there's a thing called a position schedule, and it shows a reduction of 20 positions. That's a lot. And earlier today, I was told that might not be right, but I think there needs to be some thought about that. Because if you noticed, if you looked at the details of the budget, both the police and fire department were somewhat augmented in this budget. They're bigger than they were. But most of the other departments are smaller and some are a lot smaller. And I'm not sure the council is aware of that detail, and perhaps some attention needs to be paid to that. Thank you.
I didn't introduce myself, but my name's been bandied around enough tonight, so you guys know who I am. Just a couple of quick points. Preliminary budget, obviously, now available. Last year, the previous city council and city manager had six presentations. That was six opportunities for the residents to understand the budget and participate in the process. Understand you were time constrained this year. It looks like there'll just be one this year. So I don't know if you can accommodate more, but I'd like you to at least consider next year with the finance department in order having more. There was a lot of good feedback from those, and a lot of people actually enjoyed it at times. Number two, if I'm remembering correctly, last year, the city council voted to eliminate 23 jobs of city employees. As Jim noted, this year's budget looks like, if I'm reading the tables correctly, another 20 jobs get eliminated. That's a lot of folks. I don't understand, as a resident, what the impacts are. I can tell it's not police. I can tell it's not fire. But there are other things that go on in the city that are important besides just police and fire. So I'd like to understand from the city council what it is that those impacts will mean. The next one, $3.6 million. Robin, Ms. Bird was referring to 3.6 million in firefight overtime this year. I think she said 2.1 million was budgeted, a million and a half over. You guys know the obvious question there. What's going on? Well, what's going on? Why was the police department able to put it under control, but the fire department wasn't? Effectively, those departments not only report to the city manager, but report to you as our representatives. And then finally, this was, oh, it went away. Robin, put it back up. Next steps. The next steps one. I thought that was very, very helpful. What concerns me as I look at it is a number of those items. We have a preliminary budget. If these items were taken care of, and some of them actually have some quantifiable dollar amounts, what would that budget actually look like? And that might be a more realistic view of the budget. Or an alternative one for you to look at to say, "Here's the budget I've got. It's a preliminary budget. Here's what it's missing, so to speak, and here's what it would look like if it were in there." So thanks.
Renee Chavez, followed by James Toma.
Voters need to know how much services cost and then be given the opportunity to vote on different revenue streams to provide them. That includes potentially additional sales taxes, parcel taxes on property, business license increases, and other fee-for-service items. These were all discussed in April of 2018 when the CalPERS presentation was made. We are now in 2019. We didn't have benefit of a new presentation, and now we're at 2019 discussing a budget. And again, it was already mentioned that there were no public workshops on that, but we'll have one on Monday after the initial presentation. I believe that, I went ahead and did the actual count. It's about 11 positions that'll be eliminated. Most of them are going to be administrative. So when asked what services will be diminished, it's going to be customer service. It's going to be the people answering the phones, the people that actually make the photocopies and do those kinds of things. Those are the positions that are going to be eliminated. But what did concern me, too, was taking a look at the directorship of the HR department is going to be eliminated for this next fiscal year. And I love Ms. Bressiani, but she's busy. And that's probably not her first job, really, or should be her first responsibilities. There should be a professional that's handling that for the city, and you could possibly avoid all that litigation that ended up happening. I wanted to address the CalPERS number of $185,149,797. When I saw that, I freaked out. And I was wondering how the current employees of the city of West Covina were responsible for that. They're not. Of that $185 million, $130 million of that is for retired employees or former city employees who are getting ready to retire. $55 million is for the current employees that are currently on staff. So of that $55 million, $13 million of it is actually assigned to miscellaneous staff. Everybody else that is not public safety, that's $42 million. So when you take a look at this, when we talk about being responsible and discussing with the employees when their MOUs run out, you need to actually look at what the real number is and understand that some of our people are actually paying more, not only for pensions, but also for their medical costs. The newer employees are actually taking a piece of that. So you need to be fair when you provide those numbers and tell the truth about that. And well, I think the other thing is, is that I further went ahead and took a look at the numbers that were available on the city's CAFER for June 30, 2018. The total liability is broken down. 70% is retired or former staff. 30% is current. Even further than that, 75.8% is public safety. 23.2% is miscellaneous. That's everybody else who's not. 1.5% is executive management, and 0.5% is EPFC. I don't think they use that that much anymore. Since the latest CalPERS report is not available on their website, I took a look at the 2017 report to get a breakdown. And looking at the public safety retired number, that was 340 people. The public safety that were currently employed at 2017 was 160, 65 for fire, 95 police. And then for the miscellaneous retired, that was 424. And the active at that point was 162. So again, take you to look at 764 retired people, 322 current as of 2017. So again, when you take a look at those numbers, you need to really break them down so where they're manageable. So I just wanted to say in closing that times have changed. What we're looking at today was not the gifts of the past. We're paying for them now. A lot of the CalPERS thing is because of bad investments that they made. And now the city and the state, as you heard over the weekend, were having to pay for it. Taxpayers have to pay for it. And so I think when you have the dialogue, it needs to be open, honest, and actually report the numbers down to where they're understandable by the general public because most people don't know. And I think it's your responsibility to present it that way. Thank you.
James Toma, five minutes, right? The previous speaker's actually made a number of good points that I agree with. So transparency, proposing to cut 16 positions. I think it's the first time the city's been under 300 proposed city employees for a while, I assume. So there should be some discussion about what that impact will be. There was nothing in that original preliminary budget that was transparent and explanatory in terms of what was actually happening in the budget. The presentation was helped today, but I think there's a lot more detail that needs to be gotten into for, I mean, this is for the public, too, obviously. And so it's not a very transparent document in terms of what's going on. Building and safety engineering, number of other jobs, positions eliminated. So there was some reference to that, but, you know, where are those savings? There was clearly a budget deficit when you started. You kind of shortcut it this year by going straight to having the interim city manager make some policy decisions about where the cuts are going to be made in terms of eliminating those 16, or maybe it's 20 positions. I'm not really sure. But, you know, ultimately, you're responsible for those, and people aren't going to read that, you know, 350-page document. Nowhere did it mention those positions being cut. So I'm glad that there's some discussion of that today, hopefully in the meetings that you're going to have in the future. And I would encourage you to do more than just the one meeting. As the previous speaker said, we did three or four, I can't remember, budget workshops. So I think there are more than one is merited, and especially with new council members, I think you'll get a lot of benefit from that as well. Second point about the budget-solving problems. There's no discussion about how the budget is going to solve either midterm problems or long-term problems. There's a brief discussion about trends. We know purse costs are going to increase by millions of dollars. I didn't see those projections for the OPEB or for purse costs. We know they're out there. We know they're scheduled. What is that impact, and what's the plan to address those things? We can't terminate 16 to 20 positions every year to maintain the budget, obviously. That's unsustainable. It was, I guess, a little bit refreshing and validating to see that the cuts that we made in the previous budgets are basically all kept in, right? There was a lot of discussion, a lot of sturm und drang, a lot of complaints, and I don't see any of those changes because I think it was realized that those had to be kept with these. And then now additional cuts are being made as well in terms of the positions. There was discussion of council goals and budgets in that preliminary document. Enhancing public safety. Departments will prepare strategic plans. So what does that mean? You know, you guys all ran on public safety. You've had at least a year or more to think about public safety. What direction are we going with that with respect to public safety? The staffing is basically static. The police department's been cut a little bit. Officers are about the same in terms of the number of police officers. This recalls to mind also Engine 4. Remember that whole drama that went on last year? $1.8 million, $2 million extra every year. Mayor Potem Wu, you said we could afford it. It's not even in the goals for the council anymore. What happened to that? That was this huge issue, I thought. No one ever said where that money could come from, and obviously, there isn't money for that, for another $2 million. I don't know why we would spend it on that anyway when, you know, the police budget needs to be supported and enhanced as well. It's nowhere in here. Enhancing city programs and services. Well, we're proposing to terminate some positions, so there should be some discussion about how services are going to be expanded in the city. There was a concern about customer service. I think that's a legitimate concern. We have so few non-public safety staff that how are we going to enhance customer service in the city? They will obviously make a difference. There's zero explanation in that preliminary budget. The staff report didn't have any detailed explanation. Those concepts are very fine ones, but without numbers attached to them or actual proposals, they're kind of meaningless. They're just words. It said, considering, the document said, considering alternatives to service, including building safety. So I think what I heard today is that that is happening for sure, but it wasn't completely clear, and it wasn't clear what savings those things are going to attain for the city. Enhance city image and effectiveness. That was another goal in the budget. And it says, a comprehensive plan will be considered, and avoidance and transfer of risk will be practiced. Again, what does that mean in terms of concrete proposals and policies that will affect the budget and will affect the city? The HR section, by the way, says that we have 346 full-time employees. We obviously don't have 346 full-time employees. We're at, according to the budget document, down to 298. It's a pretty big difference. I share the same concern about eliminating the HR director. I mean, I think the, I thought that the Controller's audit report actually called in some question about some HR issues that should be avoided and addressed. I'm not sure that they've all been addressed, but regardless, not having an HR director is a concern to me. Having somebody who's holding, you know, two or three different positions and trying to maintain that, I think, is, you talk about reducing risk, I think that's actually increasing risk for the city. So I understand that that's an expense, but not having a full-time HR director, that creates risk for the city. It absolutely does. There was a section about a redevelopment obligation retirement expenditure. I don't know what that is. I know that, is that the ROPS? I'm not, so maybe some explanation could be made about that. There was an expenditure that went from $11.1 million to $5.22 million. What is that? Are we eliminating a code enforcement officer? And I probably have some other stuff, but I'll keep my comments to the time allotted.
Yeah, because we'll do it again on Monday. If I have it, you can come back and bring them up there.
Thank you very much. Look forward to your comments.
Okay, that's the end of our public comment. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Schumaker.
Well, to give you my idea of my budget concerns, can we believe it? Under the previous administrations, we'd get one number, and we all knew that was nowhere close. I'm assuming the number would be a little bit closer because we'll get rid of the West Covina method of financing, which, you know, basically the purchase method, which was if you bought something from the city, you got a 20% discount, but if the city bought it, you paid 20% more. If you have eliminated that, that's probably going to help. I know it's a little bit harder to cut this year because you can't cut the same six police officers that you cut for the last three years. That was cut three years in a row by the previous administration. You know, how many times can you cut the same guys? You know, I don't know. You know, but that's the type of thing that was going on in previous budgets. I will agree that, you know, the overtime change, you know, if that's realistic, you know, if it's there. The police met it because they took police off the street. You know, at the time, I heard the council then say, "Well, we're not hurting public safety." So what they're telling me is, for all the years they were on the council, they were wasting money that wasn't needed. Well, maybe that's why this budget might be a little bit more believable. You know, I can't picture how you can say, you know, getting rid of certain shifts or whatever the case may be doesn't hurt public safety. Then why were you wasting all that money for all those years? You know, if you hadn't been wasting that money, maybe we wouldn't be in the position we're in today. That type of thing. You know, what it comes down to is there's a lot of things that have to change. The elephant in the room is when you're spending 75, 80% of your dollars for salaries and wages, there's only, you have to cut it somehow. And you cut it somehow by either getting rid of people or by reducing the cost of those people. None of them are pleasant to the people who get cut. The other kind of spreads the wealth or the pain would probably be a better way of doing it. I still look at different things that I wonder where we can make, you know, some, sometimes I wonder about the propensity to make cuts at lower levels. Many, many years ago, I was working at Warner Brothers, and we were merging with Time Life. And I'm sitting in a meeting where we had to cut $1 million out of a certain area. And the idea was that we were going to get rid of 20 people who made $50,000 a year. I said, "Why don't we get rid of the one person who makes $1 million a year because those other 20 people actually do something?" You know, so I think when we're looking at cuts, we need to look from the top down. You know, why do we need so many people running the organization when there's no organization to run? You know, you look at some of the staffing levels in certain areas, and you go, "My God, when we had twice as many people, we had that many people in charge." You know, so that's where we need to look at also in all areas. What it comes down to is, I think, your position. You need to get more people on the streets. And when I say on the streets, I mean people who interact with the public, whether it's police, whether it's fire, whether it's maintenance people, whether it's code enforcement, because they're the ones that actually get things done every day. They actually get it done every day. You know, sometimes the boss sitting in the office can be important, but not as much. You know, many years ago, I was at, working at a company, and we had an organization chart in the boardroom. Somebody went in and turned it upside down. And the, good thing the chairman and CEO was a, had a sense of humor. He happened to see it partway through a meeting and goes, "What is that? Why is it upside down?" I looked at him and said, "Oh, I thought you put it the right way." He goes, "What do you mean?" I said, "Well, see that shipping person? If you're not here, do we quit shipping?" He goes, "Well, of course not." I said, "When we're repairing, if you're not here, do we quit repairing our product?" He goes, "Well, of course not." He looks at me and goes, "Okay, I get the point. Other people at lower levels are by far important to the company. We need to make sure we take care of them." But he understood that concept. That's why you play the game with them. There's people around in the city who haven't, but we're making those changes there. Say, "We," the city, everybody. So look forward to Monday where we can talk a little bit more about it. And that damn fly is... So you have a good evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Jefferson Drou. Like others have said, I think it's obviously 800-pound gorilla is the pension plans. That's killing us. But when I hear about preventive expenditures to avoid ADA or needing to put 17 roofs on to avoid having to put some sort of, something to prevent the rain from coming in and filling up those buckets at City Hall, and then I hear that we're going to shift code enforcement from the police department to, I'm not exactly sure what other department, but it doesn't seem to have a, it will not have a enforcement bite on it, at least as it does today. And the way it exists today, it's really an impotent sort of an agency because it's not very proactive. We have a tremendous amount of illegal dwellings going up throughout the city. We have two, three... We have two, three mailbox property, and we know that there aren't permitted three properties, three dwellings on that one parcel, but no one goes and verifies it. So there is no enforcement taking place. So while you're speaking of all these lofty goals and wonderful plans with tremendous values for a commoner like me who steps out of his front door in the morning, I'm concerned about that street cleaning you alluded to, Mr. Manager, that is not being done as expected currently. So I really don't want to see an increase of it. I would like to see proper supervision of the contract we currently have. I spoke to this council not long ago with regards to yard sale signs going up throughout the city, ending up on the floors. No one's gotten back to me on that. Maybe it's not really that important to City Council because it's not worth a billion dollars, but it is a problem for residents. It's what we have to live with day in and day out. While these may be small things to council in the area of budgeting, it is the quality of life that residents have to endure each day, and you need to focus in on some of those If you don't change the model that we currently live under, which is, as Roger Hernandez said when he was running against some of yous, we have a Cadillac plan. We have our own police department. We have our own fire department. They're eating us up like crazy. Has anybody ever thought about reaching out and seeing what the county might cost us? Changing this model somehow, some way? Maybe it's, may pan out to be a little more cost savings instead of just spending from the right arm and pretending like you're saving out of the left. I don't think that's going to work. And in closing, I'd just like to say, I'm not very informed about all these big budget processes and how you divvy up all the money, but as Bill said, I'm not stupid, and I do see how my quality of life and those from my neighbors is changing for all of us. This city is morphing into something it wasn't twenty-two years ago when I moved in, and that's a concern I think City Manager needs to focus on. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Not seeing anyone close to public comment on this, and we'll go to, if the council has any questions.
City Manager, thank you. Can you clarify out of the seventeen positions, how many are unfilled and how many are getting bumped down? The actual number of layoffs and what are the alternative options for this? And then the second question, code enforcement is very important, which relates to public safety, and I know it's in the other, it's moved to a different department, but I do see, and I want to thank you, that they're, they are going to get additional help with three part-time as well as one. Thank you.
So I just counted the positions for the vacancies. I believe it's ten, it might be eleven. And then as far as layoffs go, you want to address that, Nicole?
Mr. Mayor, council staff and community. So what we're looking at is actually eleven, eleven individuals who currently hold those positions would be affected. It turns out to be eight layoffs, hard layoffs, and three who have bumping rights. The bumping rights in this city have to do with seniority and also if you've held a previous position within the organization. So that's what we're looking at in terms of currently held positions. In terms of vacancies, we are looking at, hold on one second, eight vacancies.
And if I may, the second part of your question concerned the shifting of the code enforcement to community economic development. Thinking there is that that would align the code enforcement with zoning enforcement, building permit enforcement, and enforcement of the planning commission requirements. Those are all areas that I would regard now as being entirely reactive and not proactive. If there's construction going on without permits, if you're in the department that issues the building permits, the coordination is much easier, and you've got access to the building permit jackets, and you know what's going on. My sense is there's a lot of construction activity occurring now without benefit of proper permits, and the city's losing revenue there as a result of that. Secondly, as regarding the planning commission conditional use permit, I don't believe those are now being enforced on any kind of a schedule when the commission approves a project with conditions of approval. It's incumbent upon the property owner to follow those, and I don't believe that there's any enforcement now at all except on a complaint basis of things like the requirement for a master sign program. We're seeing that pretty much out of control, people putting up signs that just end up fluttering in the wind until they fall off. But the city actually has a really good sign ordinance that just needs to be enforced. And then the idea that we could align those services within the one department, it's a reduction in force of one position, but we're bolstering that with part-time support. The other code enforcement position now housed in the police department, that person, I think the thinking is we could segue into a police department vacancy so we wouldn't be having a hardbody cut as a result of that shift.
Okay, Mayor Potem.
Okay, can I, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can we go to page twenty on the major eight? Major eight regarding the, as I remember, okay, regarding the bathroom with the park, okay? And I think we, I've been talking about bathrooms all the times. Okay, so we have, okay, major M funding, and why we haven't utilized on our budget, I know this is belong to the restricted fund, right? So I think we can utilize this fund to fund the Shadow Oak Park bathroom and even renovation sound of our needed bathroom in all our parks. So maybe, okay, City Manager can explain to about this issue.
Thank you, through the chair. We have, at the request, I believe it was Letty at one or two meetings ago, you did a council request for a special report on this item, and I understand that's scheduled to come to you at your next meeting. But I think the city has aligned itself to receive those funds through the county park bond measure. And the question that you asked, and we're going to answer, I believe, at the very next meeting, is can those be used for this purpose? We think perhaps yes, but I want to answer that as part of a full agenda report at your next meeting.
So they including this budget or not?
The money has not been allocated for that particular project. If you remember when we originally went to do the Shadow Oak improvements, that was supposed to include the restroom facility and the parking lot, which was a little bit over a million dollars. So that was coming from various funding sources. The park playground was what was being proposed to use Measure A. So we were going to do the entire project in one project instead of phasing it out because to phase it out was going to cost more money because you're bidding it and you're not getting the economies of scale. So the short answer is yes, it can be used to fund the restroom. The longer answer is that it will segue into the report that's going to be given on June eighteenth because we want to be able to use the maintenance money for it. In addition, we're going to be getting about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and that's not enough to do the restroom as we had it bid originally. So we would have to go back and cut aspects out, downsize potentially. So there's a lot to be looked at with that particular project, but the restroom by itself, we would have to hold funds over for two years in order to afford that restroom facility.
I'm kind of confused over here because if you read this, okay, paragraph, the city used Measure A fund for certain capital project related to parks such as rebuilding restroom. So there we identify we can use Measure A's money and to, and I know that Shadow Oak Park, okay, the build, okay, the restroom has been postponed for so many, many years, and supposedly we should start construction last year, and they got postponed again. So, so, okay, I think we should try to get this money and to start building, okay, the Shadow Oak. They've been promised to residents for, I don't know, ten years already?
Right. So again, the short answer is that yes, we can fund a restroom project. It's a longer discussion and a longer answer because there are maintenance funds associated with it, and in addition, it's a bigger project that the City Council has allocated for a priority project in its totality. So I think that's going to be a further conversation next in two weeks that we can have because as I see it and as I have presented at the commission meetings and park needs assessments, the Shadow Oak project, parking lot, lower plateau, restroom, and tot lot is the priority project as a whole, so we can further discuss.
Thank you so much. And we have sixteen parks. Have we, have we surveyed, okay, surveyed all the parks, how the restroom, the bathroom, the situation, okay, and which one has a priority need to be renovated? Because I think a lot of bathrooms is look horrible. I know recently the Cotess Park had been renovated, okay, this year in March, so that is a good news, but still some residents not too happy. They say it's kind of Mickey Mouse. Okay, so, so I don't know, compared with some other, okay, bathroom in some other parks, how we survey to see the situation? Because I think the bathroom is very, very important for the people who utilize the parks.
Agreed. And I would say with our park needs assessment that we did back when the ballot measure was going forward, we have an inventory and a condition level of all of our park facilities. However, I think what that, what that inventory did versus what the park needs assessment did were two different things. The park needs assessment were, was where residents came out and voiced their concerns or in favor of a particular project, and that really had nothing to do with what staff would consider priority versus desires. So that's what the council and the community as a whole will have to further discuss, and the intention is that we'll come to the next council meeting with a report for the council. But now that we've moved to districts, we will most likely be going out by district and having more community meetings to get more input.
Thank you so much. I don't want to take all night, okay? I want to be quick, okay? And can we move to the, okay, the police, okay, regarding the budget? Is it okay? Okay, okay, okay. Hi, Chief.
How are you?
Pretty good, thank you. Okay, a quick question, okay? Okay, currently, we have one hundred, okay, police officers, am I right?
We have ninety-nine officers.
Ninety-nine, okay. We budgeted, okay, ninety-nine or a hundred?
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine? Okay. And now currently, we still have, we, I know I went to yesterday the swoon, so we still have five vacant positions?
Yes, we had seven positions available two days ago. We hired one. We have one individual that's currently in the academy, and we've made a job offer to that individual. That leaves us with five, and we have five individuals that we are currently doing backgrounds on.
And how soon we can fill up all these five positions so we can put them into, on our street?
Well, potentially, we could have, we can make offers to five individuals by the summertime, by the, by the middle of the summer. However, some of those individuals will have to go to academies. So the academy is run twice a year. They're about five to six months long, so getting them on the street could take well over a year to get all of them on the street.
So the next question I have, basically, I know is, is cannot compare apple to apple, okay, apple to the orange. The comparisons, what I, okay, living West Covina for thirty years, okay, and twenty years ago, our police size about, okay, a hundred twenty-five, something like that. And how can, okay, our Monty currently have a hundred twenty police officer, and they are seventy-four million dollar budget, and we, okay, only have a ninety-nine. And how can we continue, we have a chance to increase, and how can we, okay, make sure we have this opportunity or this ability to hire more in the future? And the point is, is increase the service but reduce the overtime. If we can go to the page number, okay, one sixty-one, and I can see compared with, okay, eighteen, nineteen to, okay, this year, okay, I think this one is reduced, but if you see, okay, on the page one sixty-three, the overtime is increased from twenty-five, this is jail, okay, personnel, okay, and for forty, from twenty-five to forty-two thousand dollars. And if you go to the police, okay, the department dispatchers, okay, it's overtime from hundred fifty-seven to one eighty-three. So basically, what I see on the police department, the overtime didn't decrease, okay, compared with last year. On this proposal, it looked like it's increased.
Overall, the overtime decreased quite significantly. What you're looking at is just one department compared to the overall. So let's take the dispatchers, for example. We are still down five dispatchers. In order to be fully staffed, we need five more. That cuts down on the overtime. We have to have those individuals in there in order for us to handle our services, so it does create overtime. That overtime is every day, it increases. So until we get those positions filled, you're going to see the overtime outweigh what was allotted, okay? Once those positions are filled, then you should see a decrease in that overtime. But overall, and overall overtime for the department as compared to last year, if you compare last year to this year, we dropped significantly. As a matter of fact, per our current budget, and I don't have those numbers in front of me, at least as of late April, early May, we were on target to meet our budgetary demands from last year. So we did a good job at curtailing the overtime in the police department.
Good, thank you. And the next question about the performance, okay, we, if we fill up this five position hopefully in short time, and I think there will be, okay, it's a good chance for you to reduce the overtime, even increasing six police officer on the street.
In positions like dispatch, the jail, some of those places, yeah, you will see the overtime decrease. However, you will totally, you will never totally eliminate overtime in the police department. So there's going to be some, if you have a major shooting or something like that, you're just going to have those overtime costs. But I just, overall, I know that the police department, I'm very proud of the fact that we've been able to meet our goal as far as overtime compared to the previous year. So we are working on it. We're down positions, but the one thing that I will stand by, and I think most people in the department would agree, is that we have to maintain a certain standard when we're hiring people, and we just refuse to just take anyone. We still have standards. We will still look at that, but we have people working diligently on hiring those positions, and we have people in backgrounds now to fill them.
And another thing I want to share with you, I received quite a few emails regarding they saw more police present currently, so I don't know how you make the difference compared with before. Okay, it looked like, okay, the residents feel safer, okay? So how you make it, okay, work?
Well, we are trying to come together as a police department. We're trying some new things, and I think those things are working. We're just getting people out there. The officers are responding to be more proactive. You know, sometimes when you're going through some struggles, that doesn't always happen, but I think we are communicating better. We're in a better place than we were a few months ago, and we'll just continue to work towards that.
And another thing about the patrol, okay, I know based on the budget, okay, the patrol is only, okay, okay, about fifty, okay, about thirty-six plus seven, okay, we're talking about maybe fifty, forty-five percent doing the, in the patrol division? So what I'm saying is, okay, can we have more people to share the shift, including the lieutenants and all that, to share the burden, to have more presence on the street?
That is not the way we're currently set up. What we are doing is we're trying to find better ways to manage the people that we do have. Part of that is going to be filling the positions that we do, but the way the structure is, there's a certain amount of people that go out and fulfill those positions. And if you go back to last year, even before we eliminated... And if you go back to last year, even before we eliminated the overlap shift, we didn't decrease the personnel, we just moved them around, which at times causes less officers on the street, but there's times where more officers are on the street. So we have those numbers out there, but based off of our structure, the numbers that we have, I mean, we just, we can't put lieutenants on the street to handle beat work and all that because they have a specific function. So from sergeant down, we have those people in place, we can management, we can take care of the city and take care of the citizens here.
So, okay, my final question, okay, so I don't want to take too much time again. Okay, so when people call in right now, okay, that before, okay, to take forever to get a service with it, now we improve the responder time?
If you look at our response times, they have actually been pretty consistent. The one thing that we cannot account for is when we have three or four major incidents that happen fairly close to each other. Even if we had 160 officers, depending on the type of incident, it can deplete our services. And unfortunately, what we saw last year is a couple of times where we had a couple of major incidents that happened really close to each other, where we had to call on other agencies. That is not the norm. But we do have the police officers to take care of our city. Our response times from year to year are fairly close. There are months where it goes up, but we monitor that very closely. I think we're doing a pretty good job right now.
Thank you so much.
Chief, just because we happen to be on this page, it caught my eye, the school resource officers.
Okay.
I know you have two with West Covina Unified. Do you have any others?
We have three school resource officers. We have one at Edgewood, one at South Hills, and one at West Covina.
Okay, now, this will just go back to staff. It shows 300,000 as the reimbursement cost, which makes no sense to me because I know West Covina Unified pays up to about 80,000 for each of its two officers, so that's 160. I can't imagine Covina Valley is paying double the cost of West Covina. And so it even shows in the actual 1718, you guys only brought in 195, 224. And I believe part of that would be because West Covina didn't have its second officer the whole time. So I'm just wondering where that 300,000 is coming from, or is it just something that somebody sees and is carrying over year to year?
Let me look into that and report back to you.
My last question. I know they all have a question, okay? Otherwise, go to midnight. Look, I have so many questions over here. But anyway, this is for the fire, okay, we got an overtime again?
I'm going to ask the fire chief to come down so we don't have any pause.
Okay, you know, my major concern is always overtime, okay, consultant fee and attorney fee, okay, these three things, I think it's my major expenditure, the city is kind of leaking. So overtime, and currently, how many staff? Okay, we budgeted 71, right?
We are budgeted at, yes, it's 71 right now.
And it's fully staffed currently?
No, we actually have five, six vacancies. We have five people starting, should be on the July 1st, they should be onboarded right around that week, and then through the training, we'll be fully staffed after that moving forward, with the exception of one spot we're holding open, which is a spot for myself since I am in the acting position.
Okay, so the person filled out position, we reduced overtime? And do you remember we talked about, I hate the most is forced overtime for you guys, and it's bad for you and bad for the city? So can we reduce the overtime when you fill up all the positions?
Yes, overtime is going to go down significantly by filling all the positions. The forced overtime and the overtime in general will go down quite a bit. The honest number in the budget this year was a number based off of a 10-year trend of all overtime that's been worked through our constant manning requirement, the fact that we have to fill every spot, no matter what happens every day, we have the same number of firefighters on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, all the way through the week. If someone takes off a day, a benefit day, a paid time off day, or calls in sick, we have to put someone for overtime, that's why it can never be eliminated completely.
I understand, but when I say you still budget 2.1 million dollars overtime?
Yeah, so that's how we got to that number, it's an honest number. As we see, we've always budgeted 1.1, 1.7, it's never got there. That number was determined by looking at the 10-year trend of all overtime, by taking out the vacancy costs too. So we broke down overtime by how much?
So basically, the budget 2.1 million dollar overtime, not necessarily we use it. When you fill it up, this 2.1, maybe we reduce to maybe 1.2?
Well, only time will tell. We haven't had a fully staffed fire department throughout the entire fiscal year, in the last 10 years, we've always had some vacancies, we've always had varying degrees of people getting injured, things like that. So 2.1 is a number that's attainable by good management. So as long as we're doing the right things from the management down, we should be able to be below that, and that's why we took out the reimbursable overtime for mutual aid, things to get a real honest.
Yeah, the point is this, okay, because you, police and fire, it basically occupies 78% of our general fund budget.
Yes.
Okay, and then we have to find a way to reduce some of these costs, okay? And if we can reduce to, okay, normally 65, even 65% of general fund budget is DRI, and we are up to 75%, so we really have to find a way to reduce, okay, some of the costs, okay? The one we, I think we can manage basically is overtime. And due to the number, okay, I talked to the, okay, the mayor of El Monte, they already have a number, the hires, okay, will be cheaper than the overtime. So hopefully, you have to cut the overtime, and we don't mind to give you the staff due to the service we need, okay, and due to right now, the population and so many people calling, and we want to make sure the people get help and get service.
Right.
Okay, and I really love, okay, your, this one paragraph, okay? This is something I want to read, you say, you wrote this? This is something?
This was adopted before my role.
Oh, but I think this is public safety should have this. Respond quickly, treat people with respect and dignity, okay? Utilize experience and training to assist the most appropriate manner, and look for additional opportunity to help make the community safer. I think this is excellent. I think this is public safety, you guys slogan have to remember, this is your job. And at the same time, have find the costs, okay, how to, okay, manage our costs. You can see, we do the ultimate sacrifice, and to make sure you guys fully, okay, and okay, with all the people's staff, okay, all the staff. So in that way, you guys have to find a way to reduce the overtime, okay, and so all we can balance the budget. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chief. Go ahead, I do my last.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just piggybacking on Mayor Protemu's previous comments, I've also heard about the Cortez Park redo of the bathrooms, that it was kind of maybe not the best. But the fourth bullet point that we had on what happens next, we're going to be looking at the bidding and purchasing processes, it's something that I had been asking for. So I thank you guys for that, and I'd like to see if David, Nicole, and Scott, we could meet next couple of weeks to look at that and see how we're going to address that. I know we could make some improvements that are already underway in some of our landscape maintenance, and I've seen a few other things that I know we can do better. I know it's being worked on, but I'd like to learn a little bit more about those processes and how we could improve them.
Through the chair, the answer to the question from the council member is absolutely yes, I'll arrange the meeting. I know these goals were written, I think some of it was mind reading, and I think that one's probably from you. And so we were trying to look hard at the city's purchasing procedures and find ways that we could maybe cooperatively bid, or piggyback, or take advantage of different thresholds in state law that would enable us to be more efficient and save money. But we'll be happy to arrange a meeting to talk about those issues with you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to double check the drainage issue at Orangewood. Is that part of the CIP funding, or is there another source to fix that issue?
Through the chair, we do have, the answer, the short answer is yes, we have identified a source of funding for that drainage situation. We intend to dovetail that one with another project that's on the CIP list, and to address the drainage issue at the same time that project is advanced. It's always interesting when we look at these public works projects, the first time you and I inquired about it, we got a preliminary cost estimate of, I forget, $35,000 or something, and then my experience with the first number you ever hear is that it doubles from whenever that first number appears at the opening of a bid, it's always twice the first number we heard. And so I now noted that it's up to about $50,000, that component, but it's a justified project, and we're planning to combine it with another one to get it done.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank staff for this preliminary budget. I know it took an incredible amount of work. It's interesting when members of the public get up here and comment on what we haven't been able to include in a budget, when, you know, at this point, we're just trying to right the ship, find our baseline, so we know what we can do. We, you know, I plan to see what we can do to bring the overlap shift back, to see what we'll do with engine four. But until we have our baseline numbers, you know, it's impossible for us to say, yes, we're going to put this back in and dig a further hole for the city than we're already in. I mean, the preliminary budget basically has dollar-for-dollar match, no wiggle room at all for any adjustments. Thank you, Ms. Lopez Viatto, for bringing up the issue of the drainage at Orangewood. During the previous administration, one of the council member's spouses brought this up to the school district, and we brought it up to the city, and nothing was ever done. So I guess it took a change in leadership to move that forward. So I'm sure the district will be happy not to have to address that anymore. I already killed, hey, I killed one of them. You guys are on your own for the other one. And so the decisions in here to possibly lay off positions are not easy ones for this council to make. You know, thankfully, a lot of the positions are empty. It's very important to us that public safety not be touched, because ultimately, if we don't have that, what do we have in our city? And so, you know, the police department did a 10% cut last year. As we go forward and have our baseline numbers, then we can start negotiating with the unions. At this point, we can't negotiate with them and say, hey, we have no money, because the response is, well, you found $6 million last year, you told us you had no money, you laid off maintenance workers, and then found $6 million. So until the unions can trust that we know our numbers, we can't ask them to give us something. And so this is our baseline, this is our start. So I would basically just ask the community to give the council a chance, give the administration a chance to right the ship. It's not going to happen overnight, but I hope you at least see that we're projecting a balanced budget, that it's a start. So that's it.
It's not a question, it's a comment, okay? I want to echo, okay, councilwoman, okay, she'll make regarding this budget, I think this is a very good speech, this regarding, nobody want to cut, nobody want to lay off people, I own company, I don't want to lay off my staff, okay? Absolutely, okay, but unless, okay, this is something, it's become, you have to do what you have to do, but then you choose, and which one would be important to the community, okay? Fundamental, without the public safety, you don't have a quality of life, okay? We want to make sure that our residents is safe, so we need to find a way to sacrifice something, and hopefully, and with this, we can have more prime service. I think the reform is more important thing is, is how can we get a prime, okay, a link and main government and to have a good service, okay? Good service, not only, okay, it's just balance the budget, but increase the service, okay? I think this is our goal, is how can the taxpayer can have a good service at the same time, have a public safety, and that we can continue grow on that. So I really want to thank, okay, the interim city managers and our interim, okay, our finance directors, okay, and because this is something you got to put it together, and I can see, and I check, and I make sure the number behind the number, okay, and I got it, and it's really professional compared with last year. Last year, I have a poor test, and then we have a go fight meeting till August, and we can even get the right numbers, okay? And this is night and day. So that's why I want to thank you guys, okay, to make this thing, and all your explanation is very clear, okay? And hopefully, we can base on this and grow, okay, to the future, and try to find revenue at the same time, try to cut the leak, okay, try to cut the costs, okay, try to cut the waste. So from there, I want to thank you guys.
Okay, I just have a few for finance director. I think she can answer these, we won't be here all midnight, I only got about 30 of them to ask, no, I have a few of them. Okay, on page 55, on 9110, transfer in funds, it was adopted budget was $1,997,968, and there's only 578,000. I just wonder what was the difference in such a big, what was projected, and then we only have this much doing it. 1,400,000 difference.
You're looking at the transfer page, is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, 9110, transfer in fund of 110, and I was just curious, what's the difference in those?
I'm not sure which numbers you're talking about.
I'm looking at, it says, on transfer in fund 110 goes across adopted budget of $1,997,968, and proposed budget 578,918. I just wonder what, why the number was just such a big difference, that's all.
I'm not sure what page he's on.
Page 55, fourth column, under 300 City Debt Service Fund.
So the transfer into the debt service fund, that's for payment of the bonds every year, and so those numbers go up and down based on the debt service schedule? That's the best explanation I can give you right now without looking further into it, but I believe that's what it is.
I was just curious, I just saw such a big difference there, and I'm not good with numbers, I thought you'd make an explanation. And on 57 for the fleet management, I mean, was that the cost, that's on page 57, adopted budget was $1,423,000, and it's actually $1,800,000? I mean, is that on page 57? Down towards about 365, fleet management, on number 365, in debt services too. I'm just wondering what that is. It'd be down at the bottom, can you see it?
So for fleet management?
Yes.
And your question is, I'm sorry?
The one that says adopted budget is $1,423,000, and actual budget is $1,800,000, proposed budget, I'm just curious on those numbers. Just a curiosity.
So those numbers are for internal service funds, and what they're based on is the expenditures in those funds, and then the money comes over from the other funds. So there was either increased expenditures in that, and again, I can get you a better answer when I can look at the detail.
No problem, the next one. My next one, I'm going to roll fast, but next one, page 90, if you want, number 300, and then 169, one's a debt service city, and those are park accretion funds. I see where it says transfer out and then transfer in is $1,900,000. What would we pay for that, transfer in and transfer out? I know the two pieces of property we bought from Sunset Field, those are money that we've got advanced from the Sunset Field, is that what that is, the money? Is that what that is? I'm just curious about that. I see the money came in and the money went out identical, the same.
So actually, that transfer in will come in in the coming year, and it is for the sale of Sunset Field?
Okay, now, it's not supposed to go into a special fund, that's not supposed to go into a general fund, that's supposed to be used for parks only. That's supposed to be used for parks only, not for a general fund.
And it's not going into the general fund?
Okay, that's right.
It is going into the park fund.
Okay. No, I'm just, this shows I've been looking at this. Okay. And I guess that's the same, like on page 134, number 9810, another transfer in. It says transfer in, 9810, transfer in. We didn't project anything, but we got 1,314,000 coming in. I'm just curious what that is, by me.
Again, I believe that that's for debt service payments on our bonds.
Okay. Okay, on page 191, if you go down to the bottom of it, just a question on that one. It'd be 6490, it's last one, it said miscellaneous expenses. I see we didn't, we projected 357,000, but we didn't propose any budget. Are we just eliminate those expenses or what? Because I don't see it was carried over.
So typically, they haven't budgeted for that in the past. The reason that number's so large this time is due to some aggressive, for business license, there were, our consultant, HDL, has really been working on making sure that all the businesses in town are paying their business licenses. So he, there was a spike this year, and their recommendation to me was that that would not continue. It might somewhat, but they don't expect it to continue on an ongoing basis, so I left that blank.
Okay. And on 224, then next to the bottom, there's no number to it. It says allocated costs on it. I see it was projected actual was 17,664, and adopted was 59,000.
Those allocated costs, again, most of that is, it gets allocated for, that's not it. I'd have to check into that, I'm not sure on that one, because that has to do with the successor agency. I'm just not sure what that is.
No problem. Get back to us on that one. Okay, on 225, the next page over. I see under salaries and benefits, right there, there's, I noticed that on the professional service, other contractual service, banking credit card fees, we, on 1819, was 6,850,350, but then we're not actually adopting any of those numbers for this year, 1920. I wonder why.
That's correct. I actually got an email today from one of the staff saying there's a procedure that they do at the end of the year to budget some of these numbers, and it might have had to do with this program, and I need to look into that. But it won't be a significant change. And again, this is all coming from successor agency housing funds, and so that money comes through on the ROPS.
Okay. And just a couple real fast questions here is, with the layoffs that we're having on some of them, like contracting, engineering, and building, how much of that is from the general fund? How much of that from special funds? I'm just curious what the savings on those are.
In the engineering series, almost all of it is special funds. In the building and safety, those are general fund revenues. We think by looking at this alternate service model, we can improve efficiency and response times in the building and safety realm. As regards the contract engineering, I think it makes sense to shop those services occasionally. I think the federal guideline is to shop it every three years for projects that involve the administration of federal funds. We interviewed just this week the top two firms on the engineering services, and I can tell you, it was a day and night difference between the firm that came up ranked number one, what's going to be recommended to you, and the other one. We also think it's a way, by bringing in the right firm to do the engineering services, that we can have the city do a much, much better job of being successful in securing state and federal grants and aid. And so it's not just an expense that can be charged to the restricted funds that we don't need to worry about. It's an opportunity for the city to gain more and to bring in more grants to deliver projects for the community. On the building and safety side, most cities have transitioned to a private sector model a couple decades ago. And so in a lot of respects, I think the West Covina City Hall feels kind of like a classic model that was never, never looked at these alternatives of service provision. I think we can improve service, we can increase responsiveness in terms of plan check times, and be better providers for our customers, the building community. We're also concurrently going to be looking at the fees and cost recovery in that area.
Oh, and thank you for that. I know this is kind of a, we didn't have any pre-meetings that we could ask these questions and try to get better answers for them, but I do appreciate it if we can come up with some of those answers for the next one. I did have a few more statements, but you know what? On the way to the budget, when we have our next meeting on the 18th, on the budget, those are just some comments I want to make, I can make those at that time. Is there any other more comments?
So on page 229, I see all the list of special events. I do see a few that's missing, and I wanted to know why. I know we have great partnership with organization and service groups. So I see, oh, 229, 229. I see 4th of July is missing, which I know we're having it on the 3rd, and we're going to have a light show, so thank you for making that, taking my recommendation for that. We're missing the egg hunt, breakfast with Santa, Christmas parade, the West Covina Film Festival, and Halloween. So I just wanted to know why it wasn't listed on here, and it shouldn't be cut. Thank you.
So the 4th of July was left off because not knowing where we were at. So when we came back in January with the foundation discussion, that was one that we left off. And so in the interest of not putting it on there and having everybody get excited about it to then have to pull it off, that's a far bigger conversation, because even with the funding that's been appropriated for this preliminary budget, we're not looking at being able to fund 4th of July. So that is something that we will have to talk about moving forward. As far as Easter, I think that was one that was taken off originally, because we were going to look for partnerships, and then we funded that out of, in partnership with Kiwanis, but also in partnership with the foundation. So moving forward, I think that's going to be something where we'll have that in there, knowing that that's something that the council wants. At the time where we presented, when we prepared this, it was when, I want to say, a couple months ago when we prepared it, we just didn't know if we were actually going to be the ones footing the bill for that moving forward.
And if I may just wrap up the answer to that one, as with the request from Council Member Shoemaker, let me look into that and give you maybe a more complete response. We can try and align these special events with the actual money that we put into the budget to fund them all, and review that at your next look at the budget.
Thank you.
Okay, I lied, okay? I have more question. Okay, because it's a community event, okay? This is something I care the most, okay, beside the public safety. Okay, and as I remember, last time talking about, they have a couple of program, okay, the community want to partnership, okay? And including my church, my church, Christchurch Church, okay? My pastor told me they're willing to, they can sponsor 1,000 children's of candy at Halloween.
Was this for the Oktoberfest? The Lutherans drink a lot of beer.
I don't know they drink beer. I don't drink, okay? But my point is, okay, they are willing to sponsor the Halloween candy, and so maybe we can just partner with the church, okay? And with our firefighters or police, we can together to have children have a chance, we can give, okay, the children have a chance to have a good time during the Halloween, okay, festival, okay? People can dress up, kids dress up, and then the partnership of the church can give out the candy, okay? They got so many candy, so much, so many candy, they can give out. So I think this is what I think, it's not always using our general fund, okay? And even using our general fund is so little, it's not going to make a dent. But the community event is very important to put our resident together. So I'm strong, okay, strongly emphasize, so we need have an event, for otherwise, why we need the government besides the public safety? We need have an event, okay? So you want to say something?
Yeah, the one thing that I did want to mention is, back in January, when we talked about this, the council gave me the direction to put forward the events that I thought were having the most impact. And so Halloween, even though I love Halloween, it's one of my favorite holidays, in talking to staff, it wasn't what we thought was bringing the most enjoyment out of the community. It's a popular event, but the cost for that event, cost recovery isn't really there. So yes, partnering was something that we were looking at, but that was still something, knowing, not knowing what the budget was going to be, we were looking at only having the events that we were going to be partnering with the big cost items. So Easter was omitted on accident, but that was always the plan to move forward and partner with Kiwanis, that they wanted to do that, and it looks like we will. But Halloween was not. But if this council wants, if that's a priority event, again, as interim city manager David Carney mentioned, we will bring back a more comprehensive list, and again, the costs associated, and we can have a further discussion.
So yes, maybe we can, in the future, we can have a meeting to talk about what kind of event, okay, and who's going to sponsor, okay, community to pitch in, okay? And I remember, okay, Kiwanis, they want to sponsor, okay, to Christmas parade, and they even want to make this year much bigger than last year. They want to entire street, okay, Glendora to have a parade, and possible we have a high school band, okay, and from three of our high school, even junior high. I think this is a good event, and it's now, at least on this, okay, program. I think we should look into it, okay? And hopefully, the city and the Kiwanis, we can work together. Last year, even such a short, okay, and a parade, but it got a hit, okay? Everybody loved it, okay? And the West Covina, a big city, and we don't even have any parades, kind of unheard of. I think we should bring back, okay? And again, it's not going to cost too much of, hopefully, general fund, okay? Almost none, but hopefully, we can use the city. For example, we give them the street, okay? And then we can have a community donation sponsor, okay, and put this event for all the children, and all the parents can have a chance to, okay, see their kid perform.
One last thing, I did want to make a comment, then we're going to move on. About what Jefferson said about our yard signs. You know, I do agree with that. I know we have an ordinance, you're not allowed to have any more than three yard signs, I mean, three yard sales a year, but if code enforcement be cutting down, there's no way we're going to be able to enforce, make the signs up. We need to put some teeth behind it. If we're going to try to enforce anything about yard sign being left up after the yard sign's over, without any teeth in it, you can't enforce it. You can't go up to them, say, you know what, this yard sign's not allowed to be up here. So what do we do about it? You can't smack them on the hands, you're not going to do anything about it. They have to come down, every yard sale on Saturday, Sunday, even the signs got to come down, and not thrown on the ground either. If we pick it up, it has your address on it, our core people should be able to sort about it.
Mr. Mayor, can we have a city manager finish up about the community event, then we move on to the sign? Not yet, he's want to answer.
I think that the answer to the question about your request for community events is the same as to Letty. In fairness to the department, this budget, as it was being assembled, had more moving parts than a kaleidoscope. And this one came in as a lump sum request, a supplemental request, a departmental request, and we were looking for quarters under couch cushions, and we took some of the money out of that request. And so I think what we need to do, and we owe you, is a list of how much money is allocated currently, and which events we think we can do for that money. And I agree completely with the philosophy, I get it, in terms of community events, I think it's how we define community, and I think it's what makes a community a special place. So there won't be any argument about, do we like community events? It's how do we pay for them?
Okay, so we might be, we need a list, okay? And beside all this very few, okay, we maybe have a list, next time, okay, say, can we do this, can we do this, okay? And then we can find the money, can we have a community to pitch in? And I think a lot of community, okay, different of entity, they're willing to pitch in, okay? And, okay, and that everybody in church, okay, association, okay, charity group, everybody pitching, it's community, okay? So that everybody put together, and to have our, okay, the high school, or the junior high school, elementary to come out to perform. I don't think it would cost any money, it's just the effort, okay? I think just the effort, willingness of the government willing to do it or not, okay? And the thing is, this is what I was always thinking about, is you don't think about this, then it's not going to happen, but you think, then you put it together, it's going to happen. And it's not going to cost money, it's only cost the effort. So anyway, and maybe in showtime, we can have a list, then we can have maybe one of our, okay, meeting, we can talk about what we can do, okay? And we can maybe coordinate with those entity they're willing to sponsor.
Yes.
Okay, real fast, finish up on that, about the yard signs. I thought maybe we get more information out there, maybe on our webpage, put in our paper that goes out, you know, that you're only allowed to have three yard sales a year. And the penalties, if you don't get your yard signs out, we have to put some teeth into it, because if we're eliminating probably some code enforcement people, we're not going to have that many people go out there and look at it. So I think if we make the residents aware of it, what the penalties are, I think we might have a better response.
And I agree with Mr. Mayor, okay? And Acadia or Temple City, they fine you, okay? If you don't take your sign away, they will give you a fine.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think this issue we're veering off of the discussion, which is the budget, so I have no problem with finalizing this under the Mother May I section of the agenda, but can we close the budget item out first, and then?
All right.
I know, but then it kept going.
I do apologize, you are correct. Okay, I think we are done with our budget. So now, do we have any AB 1234 conference? Anybody wants to report?
Do we have to vote on receiving and filing it, or are we finished?
I don't think we need a vote, I think we take your direction. We were really recommending three things tonight. You receive and file the report, you direct it for broad public dissemination, you refer it to the ad hoc committee, which meets tomorrow night, and I guess we're going to have a special community workshop next Monday.
Sounds good to me.
That's all we need.
Okay, consensus on doing that? Okay, okay. Okay, I was standard adjourned.
Not yet, not yet, Mother May I.
Somebody had a Mother May I? I didn't know we had any Mother May I's. I didn't know that.
A resident had a concern regarding the incident that occurred recently regarding the Airbnb situation, and the residents wanted to know what are the current rules to this, so if you can bring this back and inform us, and inform the resident of Airbnb in our city. Thank you.
I'm happy to answer right now. So our code currently prohibits these, those uses in the city, but we can provide more information if you want.
Add on the, okay, the Mother May I's is, what kind of teeth we have? Okay, the teeth, okay? We know we're not allowed to have, we do not allow Airbnb. We went through it last year, okay? The West Covina do not allow Airbnb at all. So in that way, but the point is this, what kind of teeth we have, okay? For the people illegally rent out a property, okay, have illegal party, okay, with all this thing, and create a major issue for our community, and degrading not only the safety of their neighborhood. So what kind of teeth, okay? I want the city to look into it, so what kind of penalty we can give to the police, what kind of penalty, what we can give to the landlord or the property owner, and what can, can we prosecute them? So maybe the city can look into all those potential teeth we can have for those property owners that doing the illegal Airbnb.
One I know, online, if you Google up West Covina Airbnb, you'll see. So I'm not sure if the city reaches out to those sites and let them know to eliminate anything that is linked with West Covina. The second one, it's not just Airbnb, I mean, anybody can list it on Craigslist, or OfferUp, or any of them like that, but we wanted to know just the general senses of, pretty much everything goes back to enforcement. So that's why code enforcement is very, very important to me. So that's pretty much what I have to say.
So we can come back with a report on that. So that you're aware, I had a meeting earlier today with code enforcement, and this is something that they do actively enforce, and they've taken a number of measures historically and recently, so we can certainly provide you more information. we can certainly provide you more information on that.
And, uh, I think I copied you guys on the email, I also reached out to Airbnb requesting them to reach out to us and letting them know that it's not allowed in our code, and I also forwarded them, uh, ABC 7 article about the recent incident. Haven't heard back, they told me that we would hear back, that I would hear back in 24 hours, so maybe if, uh, city staff, you know, could follow up and get them to disallow postings from being made. Thank you.
And if there's nothing else, everybody stand adjourned.